Okay, we got a quorum, the city managers here. Think we'll get started. Uh, city attorney, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
City clerk, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes, sir.
City manager Williamson.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Everett.
Yes.
Vice mayor, Mervin.
Yes.
I call this workshop of Tuesday, May the eighth, two thousand and eighteen, to order at six oh nine. Would please stand for the invocation led by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, God, be comfortful, you again, oh God, oh God, to be under the business of the city of Pahokee. Father God, we ask you for your guidance, oh God. God, we ask you, oh God, to give us your wisdom, oh God, on how to direct this city in the right way. Father God, we ask you, God, for all your input, oh God. God, we ask you, oh God, to let it be, let us be able to agree, to disagree, but let us do it in the spirit of love. And Father God, we give you name, the praise, the honor, and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. The United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Mayor Bass.
Present.
Commissioner Everett.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Vice mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney. Sergeant at arms.
Barge.
Mr. Barge.
Yes.
Deputy Barge.
Present.
City clerk, present.
Thank you, madam clerk. Thank you commissioners, thank you staff, and thank each of y'all for being here tonight, uh, to participate in our workshop of Tuesday, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we're real excited about the robotic, robotic class, uh, here, team here with us, uh, this afternoon. And the principal, DeNard, uh, we appreciate you, all hard work and your effort, and the, uh, instructors, uh, for what you're doing. Uh, you're really making the city, uh, proud. We have some, uh, certificates that we're gonna be presenting you, uh, for your outstanding accomplishment. Uh, I don't know if it's the commission pleasure, whether or not we wanna go ahead and present, uh, the awards now, or do it at our regular commission meeting. They're more than welcome to, uh, stay, uh, for the entire meeting, or I know a lot of y'all may have some things to do. Uh, we wanna try to get you out of here as early as can, and then give you the option of whether or not you wanna remain, uh, for the remainder of the meeting.
Mayor, I motion that we move it, move it, uh, I know they have school tomorrow also.
Okay. Okay, great, that's what we would do. We're gonna come down and, uh, present these, uh, certificates of achievements to the, uh, Pahokee Miller School, uh, robotic club team. Thank you. We're gonna ask, uh, Principal DeNard and the team to kinda stand up, uh, as we present these, uh, certificates. We have three, uh, you all had three different, uh, competition. One was the Florida Regional Competition Championship, uh, one was the State of Florida Competition Championship, and one was the District Championship. So, we're gonna have each of our, uh, commissioner present this to you, but on behalf of the city of Pahokee, uh, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Benny Everett, Commissioner Diane Walker, and Commissioner Felicia Hill, along with myself as a mayor, we are extremely proud of you all. Uh, we've been watching your competition, rooting for you. You have really made this city proud. You have put us on the map, and football is not the only thing that we're now known for. Uh, you all are known all over in the state, uh, of Florida, so you can congratulate yourself, give yourself a round of applause. It's a team, and we know it's a team effort, and you all worked great as a team. We also wanna recognize and thank your parents and all your relatives, and everyone associated with this team, uh, pushing you to a higher height. So at this time, I'm gonna start with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Benny Everett, and he's gonna present their certificate he has, and we're gonna go around and then do all three of them.
Good evening, citizens. This certificate reads, certificate of achievement, presented to Pahokee Middle School, uh, Subaru's robotics team in recognition of Florida Lego League Florida State District Championship, presented this twenty-fourth day of April, twenty seventeen. Uh, but it's presented, uh, the eighth of May, uh, twenty eighteen to you all, and we wanna say congratulations.
Also, the next certificate reads the same. It's just a recognition of the Florida Lego, Lego League Florida State Regional Com- Competition, presented this twenty-fourth day of April, twenty seventeen, also May eighth, twenty eighteen.
And last but not least, we, uh, we have, uh, in recognition of state level of the Florida Lego League Florida State Championship, I'm sorry, competition ship, presented this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand and seventeen, also today. But I also wanna, uh, let you guys know that we really need to commend this principal. He's been doing a wonderful job at this school, and I think he's not given the proper recognition. I mean, he's doing a whole lot more, and I just wanna thank you. I wanna thank you for doing, doing, working with this community and dedicating yourself so much to this community. Again, thank you, and thank you to all the kids.
Thank you so much. We're gonna take a quick photo op, we're gonna let Principal DeNard say a few words, and I don't know if he's gonna allow the captain of one representative in front of the team to kinda give a few words if they chose to do so. So if we can, uh, maybe easier since they already in the background, for us to come this way and allow the camera to come up this way, we'll come this way, y'all. That way it's easier to have the...
Uh, okay. Yeah, they come this way.
Y'all come up if you would, we're gonna take a picture.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you to the city of Pahokee, uh, for, uh, showing our students, uh, that we care about them. You care about them, we all care about them. They, they have done an exceptional job. Uh, I am very proud of them. Uh, even today, they are, we stayed up at school from three to five o'clock, working hard, uh, continuing to get better, 'cause they understand that that's all, that's, that's, uh, that's the future. This is the future right here, so they, they are eager to get better, they are, they are eager to learn, and that's why they're champs. So, I wanna say thank you to the students, and thank you to the city of Pahokee. Thank you. Uh, just, uh, FYI, um, the competitions have not, are not over. Uh, we just, uh, competed at the state championship level, but next week, we will be traveling, uh, traveling as a team to Arkansas for the national, uh, championship tournament in Fayetteville, Arkansas. This is a national level, uh, tournament where only the best of the fifty, uh, teams from the whole entire state, I mean, pro, whole United States, and twenty-five teams from around the world get invited to participate in. So, uh, it is a great honor, and, um, let's go Subaru's.
And one thing I wanna mention is that we only been doing this one year, and in our first couple months, we went to the state last year, and we placed fifteenth. This year, we placed twelfth out of seven hundred schools, and now on our way to the nationals. I'm looking at next year to have it, not, not only one team, but two teams, and we also going upper level. Because of what these students are doing, and the three previous students when we first started out with, we have, we are now the Discovery STEM School of the Glaze. Only four middle schools in the county became Discovery STEM Schools. So not only will I be, we're also a STEM and avid school. So we are pushing our students to be the best, and like I tell our students, if we just give them the opportunity, we could show the world what we can do. And one more thing I wanna give congratulations to and recognition to is our robotic parents. They go to everything, they are cheerleaders, and they do it all for us. So I'm not gonna stay long, and I'm just letting you know, thank you everybody in the city of Pahokee for pushing academics and showing that we could be the best. And I see a lot of people that graduated from Pahokee that were highly academic, like, uh, I look at Coach, Coach Smith, he did a lot of great things, he showed, he talked about academics. We wanna make sure we show everybody in the county that we're not only football players and track athletes, that you put a book in front of us, and we'll show you that we'll destroy it. Thank you.
Again, robotic team, thank you and congratulations to you. Wish you much success in your national competition. Now, at this time, I'll turn this portion of the program over to our city manager Chandler Williamson to kinda guide us in the, uh, agenda topics for tonight.
Thank you, mayor, commission, community residents, thanks for joining us tonight. Uh, we have a lengthy agenda, mostly because we're adding some, uh, resolutions, some, uh, some contracts for the marina to get those, uh, projects moving forward. Um, we also have some additional awards that we wanna do tonight, uh, employee of the year, employee of the quarter, sort of kind of catch up with that. Um, and that's about it, mayor. Uh, so, let me first start with, um, I think, um, what I wanted to do, if it pleases this commission, we have our human resource manager here. She wants to give you a conclusion of the city manager's evaluation. We only gonna allow her to do an evaluation, conclusion tonight. Uh, there'll be, uh, no continued discussions about, uh, a contract or amendment to the contract. We'll wait till another commission meeting to address that, if it so pleases the commission tonight. So there'll be no contract discussions tonight, or an amendment tonight at all. Uh, we'll work with the city attorney moving forward to present you an amendment that's amendable and agreeable for you guys to, uh, to, to vote upon. So we won't be discussing that tonight, but I wanna give the HR manager an opportunity for, uh, our commission meeting to, uh, give you an, uh, conclusion of that evaluation. It's Ms. Jacqueline Ramsey, she's the HR manager for the city of Pahokee.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, attendees, and all others, good evening. My name is Jacqueline Ramsey, and I'm the human resources manager for the city of Pahokee. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to present before you the city manager's performance evaluation summary. Mister Chandler Williamson has been the city manager since twenty fifteen. Evaluations were submitted by two commissioners out of four, and one from the mayor. Our newest incumbent, Commissioner Benny Everett, was not able to complete an evaluation based on his tenure. His predecessor refused and declined to complete one, and another commissioner was undecided when the evaluation was occurring. With all the submitted evaluations, the overall score for the city manager's performance was ranked eighty-five percent percentile, exceeding expectation. The specific areas that scored high for performance are in the following areas. Individual characteristics, eighty-five percent. Fiscal, financial management, eighty-four percent. Professional skills, eighty-six point six seven percent. Community engagement, eighty-four percent. Reporting, eighty-five point three three percent. Mister Williamson far exceeded the expectation in policy execution with a high average score of ninety point six seven percent. Mister Williamson's score, as it relates to citizen relations and relations with elected members of the governing body, met expectations with improvement. Overall, Mister Williamson evaluation exhibits a strong measure of support for his job capabilities as the city manager and the chief executive officer for the city of Pahokee. His annual performance goal for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, one, to complete one hundred percent funding projects from twenty seventeen legislation session. Two, increase housing and economic investment in the core of the city of Pahokee. Three, complete gymnasium and athletic field renovation. Four, increase citizen involvement with a minimum of two town hall meetings. Four, increase citizen involvement with a minimum of two town hall meetings. Five, sustain current funding streams for infrastructure projects for the 2019 legislative sessions. Here is the summary of the city manager's performance evaluation. I thank you. Good night.
We're not going to prolong a lengthy discussion, but I want to give commissioners opportunity to make any comments in reference to the performance evaluation if they so desire at this time. And we'll start with Vice Mayor Mervin.
I have nothing to say at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Everett, I know you didn't get an opportunity to provide any input because of your tenure, but if you want to make a comment at this time, it's fine also.
Not at this time, I was not a part of this evaluation.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker, I realize you didn't complete an evaluation, but also you have the same opportunity if you want to make any comments at this time.
My voice is a little small tonight, but I want to say, I don't appreciate the opportunity to do anything. Right, thank you. And, I was told of a sent evaluation, and it wasn't received by the email. So, and I get the evaluation, the written evaluation, it was sent to me, and I complained it, but it wasn't accepted. So, my evaluation does zero for everything, okay? Because I wasn't near an evaluation, evaluation to the clerk, or city clerk, or whatever. So, my zero on everything is zero percent.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Hill, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, guess I have the last comments. I'm looking forward to our commission manager retreat. And at that time, I'm hoping we would have spound on the performance goal for 2018-2019 and come up with some measurables that we can all agree on. Overall, I think the city manager have done a great job over the last three years he have been city manager.
Can I say this one thing very briefly? I'm too looking forward to that, and I think that's an excellent point that you made, Mayor Bab regarding setting measurable goals, just to see that what are the goals that are outlined for 2018-2019, that we can see that they are worked toward, and we can see how they have been accomplished. Also, definitely would like to discuss the two that were mentioned, citizen relations and relations with elected members. It said met expectation, but with improvement. And I think those could be some guiding conversations in our commission, city manager retreat.
Okay, we turn it back over to our city manager.
All right. Mayor, we're going to have several additions to the agenda. We'll address those at the regular commission meeting. That's all for my report. If you want to move into the regular commission meeting, we're welcome to do that at this time. I see we're out of time at this moment.
I would like the opportunity to, I think, I know, I know, my evaluation would be, this whole way, I said no, no, zero on everything, okay? Because I didn't have an opportunity to complete the, so I'm good, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
HR manager, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to make reference to Commissioner Walker. She said she didn't have the opportunity.
Commissioner, I mean, accept it, please. Thank you.
As it relates to the performance evaluation, all evaluations were placed in the relevant commission box on the 2nd February 28. There was a deadline for March 13. I called all commissions when I didn't see those coming forward. I did speak with Commissioner Walker on two occasions where she said she did not want to complete that. On March 16, I then called again for these evaluations to be presented to the officer that I could do the tallies. And the email reminder was sent out again on March 27 with extending a deadline of April 2. So we did extend the deadlines more than once so that everyone could have sent this evaluation in on time. So I think enough opportunity was provided to everyone to submit these evaluation on time.
And I did, like I said, I didn't receive the email. So, and I didn't, and I, when I didn't see the email, you told me that the city managers did not let you complete it. So, I don't want to debate this with you, but you are not telling the all the truth, okay? I'm not going to be, because you are in control of him, and he's not going to go against you, okay? But my evaluation is completed, zero for everything, percent, okay? You cannot control me and my decision about his opinion, okay?
Okay, we're going to move on with both sides.
Thank you.
We're going to move right into our regular commission meeting. We have a long agenda, so we're just going to move right on into that. If you would, Mr. Kovan, would you mind giving us the invocation? We're going to have the invocation led by Mr. Bobby Kovan, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry, let me officially call the meeting to order. I call this regular commission meeting of Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 6:35 PM to order. Thank you.
That's great. Father, tonight, we're thankful, Lord, for the City of Pahokee, which is located on Lake Okeechobee. And we thank you, Lord, for the freedom to meet here. We pray, God, that our leaders will have your divine wisdom in making decisions which will move our city forward. Lord, let this be a good meeting, and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Commissioner Everett.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Deputy Barge.
Here.
City clerk, present.
Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, staff. And thank each of you all for being here tonight to participate in our regular commission meeting of Tuesday, May 8, 2018. We have a full agenda tonight. Hopefully, we can run through this smoothly. If you have any cell phones, please, at this time, turn them on silent. If for some reason you have to answer your call, please ease out the door before speaking. We have sensitive mics in here, so it picks up on all of our talking. If you're planning on speaking at tonight's meeting, please, at this time, complete a comment card. We give you, we give you up to 15 minutes after the meeting starts to have a comment card completed on both the agenda items and the general concerns of citizens. Having said that, we're going to move directly into our commission meeting. And the first on the agenda would be the additions, deletions, and approve of the agenda items. City manager, are there any additions, add-ons?
Yes, Mayor, we have Resolution 2018-23, as is for the water tower towers reception from the county. Resolution 2018-24, ELC school readiness. Resolution 2018-25, CSC scholarship. Resolution 2018-26, Palm Beach Septic Systems, that's a project for the marina. Resolution 2018-27, Climate Control Products LLC, that is another project of the 1.2 million marina upgrades that we'll be accepting tonight to get those guys started at the marina.
Okay, thank you, city manager. I have one possible add-on, but it's going to be,
I'm sorry, my apologies. For presentations, we're adding Employee of the Year and Employee of the Quarter as well. Employee of the Quarter and Employee of the Year. That'll be on the presentations. I guess we can strike through to middle school robotics team, we've taken care of them for tonight.
The add-on that I have for consideration is the possible canceling of the May 22 commission meeting. And it's really up to the commission. Polk High School has their graduation, it starts at seven. We can decide to have one or two commissioners as representative, or we can just suspend, cancel the entire meeting. But I think graduation is normally a very important time for our students and their families, so.
I was seconded.
Go ahead, I'll come in afterwards.
Okay.
Could Walker motion it, so I seconded it.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Walker and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the cancellation of the May 22 commission, regular commission meeting due to the Polk High School graduation. Call for questions. Hearing, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Mayor, commission, if there needs to be just a special meeting to approve some additional contracts with the marina project, me and the city attorney will advise as we move forward. I'm sure there will be between now and May 22. We're working very aggressively to get some other contracts signed, okay?
Great. Okay, having heard the addition to the agenda items, the chair will now entertain a motion for its adoption.
I offer motion that we accept the additions to agenda as they were read.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Everett and properly seconded by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of the agenda as read with the add-ons of the resolution, the presentation of the employee of the year, and the presentation of the employee of the quarter. Call for questions. Hearing, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, commissioners. The agenda items are passed as presented with the add-ons. Now we'll move to,
Can I have a comment at this time? Because my concern is that we continue to receive information after meeting, I mean, during the meeting that we have to submit it during the, after the agenda has been completed. I have a concern about that. And we don't have enough time to discuss the agenda item, okay? So, that's my concern. And I think we need to stop doing that, allowing that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. We're moving to citizen comments. Again, you must have a comment card completed. City clerk, at this time, are there any comments cards?
Yes, sir, but not on agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which would be public service announcement. This also must have a comment card completed. City clerk, at this time, do we have any public service comments cards completed?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll move into the approval of the minutes of April 24, 2018, regular scheduled commission meeting. What's your pleasure, City Commissioner?
I wish to adopt the minute for April 24, 2018, for our regular scheduled commission meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Everett for the adoption of the minutes of April 24, 2018, regular scheduled commission meeting. Call for questions. Hearing, are you ready for vote?
I got a comment, because I voted on the one item, and that name, and you didn't let me.
Okay.
My question was my name.
Commissioner Walker, just have one correction to the agenda under one of the line items for voting. I think when we talked about the appointment of the voting delegate to the Florida League of Cities, she voted.
It was for the minutes, the first seven minutes? The first seven minutes, she voted 92.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Okay, I made my mistake, I saw it, okay? Thank you.
So that correction would be made. We do have a motion on the floor. Any additional questions? Hearing, are you ready for vote? Commissioner Everett seconded, right?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mervin moved. Hearing, no additional question. Are you ready for vote? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, commissioners. The minutes of April 28, 2018, regular scheduled commission meeting passes by unanimous vote. Now we're moving to our consent agenda. We have two resolutions under the consent agenda. Resolution 2018-19 and Resolution 2018-20. Since it is a consent agenda item, we won't be discussing this unless one of the commission desire to pull it from the consent agenda item. The chair now would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda item, which would be the two resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept the two consent agenda items as they are printed in our agenda for discussion and action. as they are printed in our agenda for discussion and action.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved by Commissioner Everett and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of the two agenda consent items, Resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen and Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. The consent agenda item passes by unanimous five to zero vote. Now we're moving to our ordinance, we don't have any ordinance tonight. We do have two additional resolutions, Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-one. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, providing for a contract for janitorial services at three sixty East Main Street with Holmes Janitorial Cleaning Services for the period February twenty-first, two eighteen, to September thirtieth, two eighteen.
Thank you, City Attorney. Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-one properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-one.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hill and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-one. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, City Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-one passes by a unanimous vote. Now we have Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving budget amendment number four in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars to the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year budget. And it appears to be an increase in code enforcement fines.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two properly read into the minutes.
I have a question. What do you mean fines?
Code enforcement fines were, came in higher than the budgeted...
Okay, it just snapped, go ahead, I'm sorry, you can answer though, it just snapped. I thought you were speaking of something else, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We'll get a chance for additional questions. The chair will now entertain a motion for the adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hill and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-two passes by a unanimous vote. Public hearing, we have none. Proclamation, Municipal Clerk Week. City Attorney, could you probably read that into the minutes?
I think we have a couple of add-on resolutions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great.
Resolution twenty eighteen twenty-three.
We have five add-on resolutions, starting with Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, approving an assignment and assumption of contract and an as-is acknowledgement between Palm Beach County and the city. This relates to the water system that services the city. As you recall back, the water systems of Belgrade, Pahokee, and South Bay were all combined into the Glades Utility Authority. Subsequently, the Glades Utility Authority transferred all their assets and liabilities to Palm Beach County, and it became part of the Palm Beach County's main water system. As part of that transaction, the city transferred its elevated water towers to DUA and then to the county. The county is no longer in need of those elevated water towers and is transferring the towers and the property they sit on back to the city of Pahokee, pursuant to the language we had in the contract, saying that if they never, if they didn't need the property anymore, it would come back to the city.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three as it has been read and explained.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Commissioner Everett and properly seconded by Commissioner Mervin for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three. Call for questions?
Question, is that feasible to the city?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is that feasible for the city?
Yes, ma'am. By us becoming the owners of the water towers, as you are aware, a lot of entities, external entities, want to use it for their satellites, their cellphone towers, and when that happens, because we in ownership, they actually actually pay us a rental fee, we actually currently get a rental fee from T-Mobile. So by them giving the towers back to us fully, we control the operations of those towers as far as anyone placing something on them, they would have to give us some type of rental or leasing fee for those, for that usage.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, City Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three passes by a unanimous vote. Now we have Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-four. City Attorney?
This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County for the statewide school readiness childcare service. This is an annual agreement the city enters into for, I believe, summer programs that occur in the city.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-four properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walker and properly seconded by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-four. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-four passes by a unanimous vote. Now we will have Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five. City Attorney?
This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the agreement with Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County for CSC scholarship provider fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
So...
See, we have Resolution twenty-five.
Do we have a copy?
It's in there, you have to look on the back, double-sided.
Waiting on a second.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walker and properly seconded by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five. Call for questions?
Question, Attorney, just for clarity and hoping my assumptions is in line with my thinking. When it says CSC scholarships, is this funding money to sponsor students?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Everett, that's our summer school program, our summer enrichment program. We run it, sort of like a voucher system for ensuring that we can take care of those fees for parents.
All right.
Any additional questions?
I would, can I just say this, and this is not undressing anyone publicly, but I do want to ditto what Commissioner Walker did state. If administration, if at all possible, can give us these resolutions so that we can peruse all of them and be, you know, fully aware of what we are taking action on.
Great. And two, let's hope we look at the seriousness of the various resolutions, those that may have some conflict or some additional questions. Make sure you ask those questions, not just pull them for our next commission meeting. But I think staff is aware that we have expressed that concern before. Sometimes things come up at the last minutes, but if you don't have a thorough time to review them, then it's our ability to pull them and have them set aside a table for the next commission meeting.
Mayor, I just want to comment on that momentarily, I want to stop you. Sometimes, when we get agreements from the county, they're on a timeline, and we don't define when that timeline is. So what happens typically, when we get an agreement that has to get back to the county for execution, and we have a commission meeting coming up, we put it on the agenda as versus waiting another two weeks because they have a deadline for us to execute. So typically, that's why you see resolutions happen like that in the city of Pahokee. This is an abundant amount this time because we added some contracts for the marina. But we don't define when we get agreements from the county, or even from the state sometimes, and when they want it back to be executed. These particular resolutions that you're looking at, they're on a timeline with the county so they can execute with their commission at the county level. So we have to put it on the next agenda available, and sometimes, as these were, you know, they're in the last two to forty-eight hours, and so we don't really have time to get it to you after the agenda has already gone out. So this is not intentional, it just, it's where the, how it falls sometime when it comes from the county.
And not to debate or beat the issue any longer, but all I'm asking, if we could, if staff can make a reasonable effort, that if you get agreements, anything that needs to be done in resolution form in twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I hope I'm not being, I hope I'm not assuming, but all of us do have access to email via our mobile device or what have you. If we can just for the sake, I just don't want it to appear that we're rubber-stamping, but that we have an opportunity to read and have some awareness of the decisions that we're making. And that's it.
And I'm motion to that.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five passes by a unanimous vote. Now we will have Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six. City Attorney?
This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the grease trap agreement between Palm Beach Septic Systems and the city of Pahokee. This is for repairs to the grease trap at the restaurant at the marina. It authorizes a five thousand dollar down payment and a total cost of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. It excludes heavy equipment operator, and it excludes rock bedding and removal of unsuitable soil material.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, I'm motion to accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six. Call for questions?
Question, what's that, Attorney?
That's part of the construction renovations going on at the marina.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Batt?
Yes, thank you, City Clerk, thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six passes by a unanimous vote. Now we will have Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-seven. City Attorney?
This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the campground and marina railing agreement between climate control quality aluminum products in the city of Pahokee. The amount of the contract is one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, and this is for the installation of guardrails atop of the marina structures.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioners, having had Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-seven properly read into the minutes, what's your pleasure?
Question? Your motion, I'm sorry.
I'm motion to accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-seven.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Everett for the adoption of Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-seven. Call for questions?
Yes, question, where exactly, I'm hearing guard railing, where exactly would that guard railing be?
Commissioner Everett, that is the seawall railing that's being installed around the entire seawall of the marina. Many years ago, when that seawall was built and they had renovations up there, what was supposed to be installed was a protective railing around the entire facility. Subsequently, that also has stopped the city from getting full insurance in that areas because of the safety and liability it's gonna cause. So that's part of the one point two million dollar project as well, to install that railing. So that's one of the two projects that we are proving tonight to move forward.
With that railing, would it impede or prevent citizens from fishing?
I think to some degree will, you know, disturb the ability to fish in some areas. That is a decision that we have to, you know, accept because of the liability that not having railing causes for this particular marina. And again, the reason why we can't repair the docks right now, because we don't have insurance on it. For many years, that railing wasn't installed. So as difficult that many may feel it may cause a burden to fish in that particular area, at the end of the day, we have to protect the city's ability not to be sued if someone to fall over into the lake and lose, and have a loss of life. And so that was one of the, again, one of the projects that we included in the state funding request to install safety railing around the entire seawall.
I hope my colleagues don't look at me crazy, and citizens, maybe present or viewing live, don't look at me foolishly, but that's a hard decision to make because that's gonna prevent... How much research has been done? Because I, that, I'm just gonna be honest.
That's extensive research, Commissioner Everett.
That's gonna be a hard, that is a hard decision to make because we're...
Just keep in mind, Commissioner Everett, just keep in mind, you know, US Army Corps of Engineers say we have to install this, and it was installed. Our insurance company that dropped us from the insurance says it must be installed to protect the, just the loss of life itself, and that supersedes any practice... And that supersedes any practice that is going on at the marina now is to protect it of citizens for kids, for adults, for seniors. You have to install that railing. The reason why it was never installed is the city never had the money. Never had the money. It was never defined for, uh, marina. And so, uh, at this time, we had that opportunity. That's one of those funded projects. We've already agreed with the state that that's one of the projects that we will, uh, complete by the July first. Uh, so we have to move forward with that. But again, by installing that raiding, railing, uh, which actually would beautify the area as well, you're also protecting the city from liability for a loss of life. And that's very important. That's very important.
How long will be the, uh, total process from start to finish? Just trying to get.
Well, w- w- we, we got to July first and so, uh, that contract, uh, was signed today by the vendor. They're going to get started, uh, as soon as the pressure washing can get done. Um, they want to pressure wash the entire seawall because it does have a, a lot of issues when it comes to discoloration. Once that is done, uh, they'll start work. So you're probably talking probably another ten to fifteen days before that project starts, which is why, again, we put out those flyers, uh, to the community, to our folks who visit the marina advising them ahead of time that these projects will be coming and the marina in some areas, even the parking lot, even the public side, those areas got to close down and do construction.
I, I, I see it as a detour. I mean, that's not the only place that they can fish and certainly we can designate or, uh, note areas, other areas. But I'm still trying to look at the total shutdown of that particular area so the public can be aware. It's probably going to take up to forty-five days or thirty days or sixty days. It gives them ideal how long that area will be off limit for their fishing, uh, entertainment.
It'll, it'll happen like this, like, we're going to do pressure washing hopefully in the next seven to ten days or, or less, hopefully. Um, that, then this seawall will close for a day, maybe two days, uh, maybe not all day, maybe just doing work hours, eight to five. Um, and then once that happens, it'll open back up and then of course the sea railing guys will come in and do the installation of, of, of the railing. So then it'll close down again, um, periodically. It'll, it'll open and close until we, uh, finish all of our renovations. And that signage by the, by the vendors will be there as well. Um, they'll be providing signage, letting our, our, our residents know that the seawalls closed today for construction or the seawalls closed today for renovations. So we'll, we'll make them aware. And we'll post it on our website as well to, to ensure everyone is, you know, is kept in the loop about when and where this, um, the area will be opening and closing.
I have a question. How high is this fence? Because I know in some places they have fence where you can, it's a guard rail, but you yet can, you know, waist high or?
The standard, uh, safety height is forty-two inches. Um, and so if you were to stand up, that's probably come right there.
That means that no one would be able to go over that.
It depends because if you walk up to the seawall now, there's a, there's, there's a part of the level of, of the cement top that's already there. We're not putting forty-two inch fence. We're probably putting like a thirty-seven inch because you have concrete that's already there, which is a part of that standard height.
So about five one, would I be able to throw a pole?
I don't know, Commissioner.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
I haven't gauged different heights of, of, of residents being able to throw a pole in there. I just know that for the liability for this city, something that should have been installed many, many years ago, now we have the opportunity, it's funded, we have to move forward with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with the fencing, but I'm just saying the height of the, of the rail.
It's forty-two, it has to be forty-two standard inches, forty-two. And it's just on one side of the seawall, it's not on both sides.
Any additional questions?
Cause I just know a lot about residents. That's, that's where they go. That's, that's, you know, I know for safety and I'm for safety. I'm for falling over, but you know, you know, I think if we can meet it, I don't know if that's the standard that they say it has to go forty-two.
That's the insurance standard.
Okay, but if we can, you know, lower it so we can, so they can still enjoy that spot, but yet have safety also.
Big, my, my only concern, and I'm going to say this and, and not stretch the conversation long. My concern is that, um, that's their sole, that's the sole place our citizens fish. And the, the railing of what we're installing is going to prevent, possible prevent them, possibly prevent our citizens from fishing. Um, I, I don't know if, uh, and, and, and with the fishing pier on the, what end would that be considered? The north end, um, not being included, be, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm really, that, that to me is a hard decision, I guess, because I'm not an implant. I'm born and reared here. I, as a little boy, I walked that dike as a little boy. Then, excuse me, ma'am, when I was courting, uh, I would take some brisk walks, you know, on there. So I, I don't know, it's a hard, uh, decision because I, I, I know, and, and as, as my colleague stated, uh, Vice Mayor Mervin, I'm for safety. God knows I am, and I don't want to place us in a situation where we can, you know, because our buzzword here has been lawsuit for past couple of meetings. But I just, I don't know, that's, that's a hard decision to make, a, a very hard, uh, decision to make because in our giving to our citizens, it appears that we're taking something away that's definitely near and dear. And I, I don't know, that, I, it may sound asinine, but it's just hard for me to make that.
I, I think the, of alternative to that would be to shut the pier down completely because if it's a safety hazard and a insurance issue, we don't have real of choice. I don't think this is gonna, uh, cause a permanent closure of the pier, just make it more safe in. I haven't saw any pictures of the railing, but it's rails.
But what he's saying, Mary, it's gonna, this is a permanent fence.
I understand it's a permanent fence and I understand they're railing, I understand there's a certain height. But you take your pole, you throw it over, you can take under rail and put it in. It's not a fence where you can't put your pole and hold it and still hold it. I, I don't see it's being something where they're not going to be able to fish there any longer.
Well, I, 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 I'm not a fisherman, but that sounded like too many steps to me.
No, I'm saying it's just you got some railing and it's got, you got an opening in the railing. You throw your pole out, you just put it over here and sit down and you can comfortably fish. It's a little convenient, but again, it's a trade off of safety. Are there?
Hit the, hit the guy.
I know we got a large tribe, we're going to have to keep our voices down. Are any additional questions, Commissioners? Want to make sure you're comfortable with it?
One, one more question, uh, please pardon me colleagues and, uh, uh, City Manager Williamson. But I do have one other, uh, question concern, uh, was, uh, I, I heard pressure washing. Uh, we're paying a vendor to pressure wash? And does not our men have the technical skills to do that?
Just question, Commissioner Everett. We are, what we're doing is, what we're, what, what we're doing is.
Y'all there with us, please, if we could cease the.
What we're doing is renovating a marina. Typical things that happen at marina, such as far as maintaining the aesthetics of it, the beautification of it, having created many, many years. This is a part of the one point two million dollar projects that we went out there a year ago that was approved by the state. Now, uh, pressure washing is a large part of maintaining an area that has a continuous effect of this type of water on cement. And once we are done, you'll see a significant improvement in that area. But yes, it is necessary before we even do installation of railing, else we have to go back and do after the railing is installed. And we're just not doing typical railing. We're doing something that's going to be, uh, one, pleasing to the eye. Uh, two, uh, something that, uh, will increase our economic development of that area. And that's something that we've, uh, leaving out here as well, um, is, again, the liability of not having it there has caused us not to have the opportunity to insure an entire marina. And we feel the effects of that today with all the damage that is currently there and we can't pay for it because we don't have any insurance. And, um, we just want to ensure, as already instructed by US Army Corps of Engineers, it's already, uh, actually been approved many, many years ago and now that you have the opportunity to install this security railing, to put it there. Um, so, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a change, um, but it's a necessary change when we talk about safety, when you talk about liability, when you talk about the loss of life, uh, which is why we want to build a fishing pier, which is in phase two, uh, of our, of our project. Uh, and so it's, it's, it's a change, but it's a necessary change to protect this city. And, uh, that's where I sort of rest, you know, my feet on is ensuring that, you know, we have a marina that is safe, that is vibrant, that's pleasing and that's welcoming, but at the same time, it protects all, each, each, each life that goes out there and walk on that dike.
Understood. I wasn't, I, I wasn't questioning the, the not pressure cleaning. But my question was specific to the pressure cleaning because possibly could open up fund. I mean, are they, is that a complimentary thing that they're doing?
Those funds are already allocated in the one point two million. It's already part of the project. There's no new money that's coming up that we're making up, Commissioner Everett. It's, all those projects have already been funded, they've already been vetted, they've already been approved, uh, here and by the state. It's part of the one point two renovations. Nothing, you know, additional when it comes to that.
Okay, let, let, let me just, let me understand. Okay. When we speak to pressure washing railing, okay, I'm going to go back to pressure washing. Is that, and, and I know you said the funds have already been allocated, approved. Okay, is there a line item where the amount for pressure washing is there?
No, Commissioner Everett, these are quotes that we're getting from vendors. There's no line item for say created specifically for pressure washing. It's a part of the renovations and installation of railing. And in addition to that, we have always wanted to pressure wash, uh, a significant portion of that seawall on the inside and on the outside where we have to typically get in boats to pressure wash the seawall to get all the dirt and debris off of it. So, uh, there's no specific line item. It's just a part of what it takes to increase, you know, the renovations and repairs and to bring that seawall back to life as far as the aesthetics of it.
I guess maybe I'm.
So no, that, you're, you're looking at it in a budgetary form. You got to look at it in a grant funded form and a project form, not a line item in the city's budget. This is not a line item in the city's budget. It's a part of a larger process of a project funded through a grant.
I, I know it's part of the grant. I guess, you know, and, 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 I, I guess I'm still learning some things. You know, I, I guess I'm stuck on paying to pressure wash. And just wondering, in the future, can, can we have, um, within the city, uh, the ability to do that and not have to get, be as a quotes to pressure wash? Especially when we have, uh, Brother AJ and his men that, that I'm, I would be, you know, assume that they have the technical skills to, you know, pressure wash, that they can do that. Just, you know, because I know with us pressure washing this time, we're going to have to pr- pressure wash down the road the next time.
Commissioner Everett, if it, if it helps you out, we're already researching when the management company comes in, how to maintain the seawall by buying specific equipment to a tune of about ten thousand dollars, which we haven't budgeted out yet. But by the time we get our management firm in there managing the entire marina, we've already had those discussions about how to prevent and repair and renovate and take care of the seawall moving forward and through pressure washing. But at, right now, it's going to be pressure washed professionally first.
Any additional questions? Hurry now, are you ready for roll, roll call? Ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin? Vice Mayor Mervin?
Can I have one more question? Is the, uh, I have one question. The contract, Climatrol Quality Aluminum Product, that's the one doing the railing. Is they also doing the, the pressure cleaning or they just railing? They just, that's just, this is just a railing.
That's for railing, that's installation of railing. That contract is for a different vendor.
Okay.
Hurry now, additional question? Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
No, uh, I know he's, I, wait a minute. The seawall, I'm just trying to get understanding. The seawall that's there already is about a certain height. So the fence itself, including with the seawall makes it the forty-two. So it's not like another extra forty-two feet up on that seawall, is what I'm saying.
Forty-two inches above the, the top of the seawall.
But that's included with the seawall inches included with the.
I, I know what you're asking. It's yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Brandenburg?
No, I don't.
Okay, the seawall that's there already is a certain height.
Forty-two is the total.
So forty-two is the total with the.
With the total, yes.
Okay.
Well, the contract reads forty-two inch high rail.
Right.
Doesn't say.
So I'm just trying to say it's still usable for people to step, yeah.
Are there any additional questions?
I want to make sure everyone understands that it is three thousand one hundred and eighteen millennial feet of forty-two inch high rail. So that forty-two inches goes on top of whatever is there now.
That's, uh, that's incorrect, that's, that's not correct, City Manager.
Well, that's what it reads.
Well, it reads that because he had to do the specifications for the contract. But again, the. Again, uh, I wish you were there today because the contractor was here. He's not installing forty-two inch rails. It's already, that lift from the, uh, seawall, uh, foundation is already about six to seven inches of cement. He's not putting forty-two inch rail on top of that, even though he specified that. He was out here today and it was about thirty-six height, which will equal a total of forty-two. It's just like what you're looking at here, Commissioner Mervin.
Okay.
On this dais. If you look at this dais right here, it's lifted up probably about three inches. Imagine six inches of wood. He's putting thirty-six on top of that cement to equal about forty-two inches. He's not installing a forty-two inch high railing. We walked the entire seawall today. Trust me, I was out there waiting for about two hours and that's one of the things that we discussed specifically.
Well, then the specifications in Exhibit A don't read correctly and it'll have to be amended.
So, yeah, can we motion that that be amended to say exactly?
Sure. That's fine. Yeah.
So you want it to be forty-two inches, uh, no more than forty-two inches above where your feet rest on the top of the seawall.
That's what it is.
Right, so it'd be total.
That's what it is.
It'd be totally including the seawall. So then that way, I know, because I know when I go over to Stewa, wherever, I see those railing and people, they can stand on the rail and they can still fish, you know, there. That's, that's what I'm trying to.
I, I'm, I'm just going to say, and I, I, you know, I don't want to appear to be filibustering or, or, or dancing. And if I could just say this respectfully to the citizens, you know, this is, this is a public meeting where we're transacting business. But if we can just minimize, uh, the feedback, but we are going to do what's in the best interest of the citizens, okay? I, I don't want to appear filibustering, but I, I'm just going to admit where I stand. I'm really on defense with this. And. And, 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 and I turn it, I, I, I know you've been a little quiet with this. I, I mean, the insurance company, there's no insurance company, the insurance company we currently got. Uh, we, we can't, uh, work with the, the, the measurements with this? I mean, that's, is, that's not flexible.
Commissioner Everett, I, I, I understand what you're saying about the personal sentiment you have. Let's take a moment here. You have to remember, no to your question, there's no insurance company that will secure this marina if it doesn't have protective railing, which is why we're in a predicament. We are now unable to have insurance feedback, I mean, residual income when we have a hurricane and it gets ravaged out there, which is why your docks are not fixed because you don't have insurance. The standard height that insurance company will ensure is forty-two inches. Now, can I get around that? Uh, this is a project already approved that the state says you must do. Um, we've already agreed to it, so we can't just delete it out and say we're not going to do it or lower the, the height of the fence and say, let's do thirty-six inches. It won't be insured. It won't be insured. Will not be insured. In fact, this, this company that was out there again today that's going to do the installations, he, he did exactly what we're talking about. He took his measuring tape, he said, Mr. Williamson, this is forty-two, this is thirty-six, this is forty-two, this is thirty-six. But this is the standard forty-two inch height for the insurance to get liability insurance installed back at this marina. We have to do it. I get what you're saying, but we have to do it.
To me, it's inconvenient, but nothing outweighs safety. I mean, if it's a requirement of the insurance company, I mean, everybody got their concerns, but it, it's a no-brainer to me. I mean, it's, it's a hazard out there without the railing. I mean, it's it's a hazard out there without the railing.
I can go for it. I go for it, Mayor, long as it's amended and that with the forty-two, you know, I can I can go.
And and, you know, let me go on the record. Now, I don't want no one to lead the meeting thinking that I'm trying to put the city in the position of being unsafe or or, you know, in liable in in a place of liability. I just was asking some questions for my satisfaction. Uh, so that when I make a decision and vote on something, I'm not voting based on pressure from either side. But I'm voting on my conscience and what I feel is right. So that's why I just probed and asked the questions that I'm asking, so that when I do vote either way, that I'm I can go home and sleep knowing that I voted the way that I feel strongly is right. So that's why I was expl- you know, probing and asking those questions. So I don't want, I wanted to go on the record of saying, I I'm not trying to put situation, the city in any litigious position or any position where our citizens, be it child or adult, uh, could be in harm's way.
Thank you, Commissioner Everett. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none. Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker? Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven passes by unanimous vote. Now we'll move into a public hearing. We don't have any public hearings. Uh, we have proclamation. We have three proclamations. The first is a municipal clerk's week, city attorney. If you could properly read this into the records.
Oh, hold on. One one thing. We're approving this, taking into consideration the amendments. The amendment that, uh, Vice Mayor Mervin stated needed to be stated explicitly in the document. Is that correct?
So do we need to motion that like that, attorney, or what?
Uh, I would suggest that you make that very clear in your motion.
Okay. Okay. I motion to, uh, accept the resolution two thousand eighteen with the amendment of the, um, the measurements of the railing and the seawall total forty-two, was it forty, forty-two, um, inches?
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Everett that there be an amendment in the proclamation to read that the seawall railing would not exceed forty-two inches. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution passes with the amendment. No public hearing. We do have three proclamation, municipal clerk's week, city attorney.
Mister Mayor, municipal clerks week, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerks provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels, and municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of the city commission and the citizens of Pahokee that by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of Pahokee, they do hereby recognize the week of May sixth through May twelfth as municipal clerks' week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, to Wanda Warner, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you, city attorney. City commissioners, having had proclamation, uh, read into the minutes. What's your pleasure?
I motion to accept the proclamation of the municipal clerk's week. Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of the proclamation of municipal clerk's week. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. The proclamation passed by unanimous decision. And, uh, commis- uh, Ms. Warren, on behalf of the city commission, would like to congratulate you and thank you for all that you do as a municipal clerk.
Thank you.
Next proclamation, Kids to Park Day.
Whereas May nineteenth, two thousand eighteen is the eighth Kids to Park Day organized and launched by National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it's important to introduce a new generation to our nation's park. And whereas it should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, mellitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. Okay. And whereas Kids to the Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of the commission and the citizens of Pahokee that by virtue of the authority invested in the mayor of Pahokee, they do hereby proclaim, uh, to participate in Kids to Park Day. Where we urge residents of the city of Pahokee to make time on May nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, to take the children and their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park.
Thank you, city attorney. City commissioners, having had proclamation properly properly read into the minutes. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, proclamation.
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walker and properly second by Commissioner Hill for the adoption of proclamation Kids to Park Day. What's your pleasure, city commission? Call for questions.
Uh, I do have one with this proclamation. Do we plan to do anything?
It's a good question. I I had that in the back of my mind. It, I was hoping that maybe we can have, uh, free hot dogs and coags out there and some type of other activity. But because we are encouraging kids to come out to the park, uh, that will be up to staff if they can pull that off. We got to May nineteenth, uh, to get it planned and get it done.
And and one of the things I I stated, you know, uh, in our, in my comments last commission, I I just wanna stick to the integrity of what I said during the, uh, candidate forum and also, uh, statements I've made in previous, um, uh, meetings. I think, uh, culture, climate is very important. I think it's critical that we do all that we can to improve the culture, the climate in our city and be it, being that this is a proclamation that we are accepting, uh, looking to accept and receive, uh, and make official. I I think it would be a goodwill gesture if we, uh, could, if, you know, within reason, staff can do something. Uh, we did our Love Pahokee Day at Commissioners Park. I would, um, I would say, uh, possibly entertaining an idea of taking it to MLK and and doing something there and it'd be an opportunity for us to shake hands, wave, and, um, uh, mix among our our citizens.
Staff, we'll hope that you can take that in consideration. If it's, uh, not a major time restraint, maybe staff can get something together so we can celebrate this day with family and our children in our city. Add some activity to it, whether it's coags and hot dogs, bounce houses, uh, little music. Let's see if we can do it. We're not gonna put too much pressure on you, but if it can be done, we want to encourage you to plan for that to happen. And let the commission know once that has been decided, that whether or not we'll be able to do that or not. Any any additional questions? Hearing none. Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. The resolution proclamation passes unanimously. Uh, the third and final resolution, I don't know if I'm saying resolution, proclamation is the senior corps week, city attorney.
Mister Mayor, whereas Americans are living longer and achieving more, taking on new roles, decades of hard work to ensure opportunities for the generations of fathers. And whereas the nation's rec- the nation recognizes the contribution of seniors during the month of May designated as Older Americans Month. And whereas older Americans bring a lifetime of skills and experience that can be tapped to meet challenges in our nation's communities. And whereas for more than five decades, the three senior corps programs, foster grandparents, senior companions, and R S V P dash half proven to be a highly cost-effective way to engage Americans age fifty-five and over in volunteer and servants that meets pressing community needs. And whereas senior corps volunteers build capacity of nonprofit community, faith-based, and other organizations by serving at twenty-five thousand locations across the country. And whereas each year, senior corps provides opportunities for two hundred and twenty thousand older Americans to serve their communities across the nation. And whereas nationally, senior corps volunteers last year provided more than fifty-four million hours of service, improving the lives of our most vulnerable citizens, strengthening our education system, helping seniors live independently in their homes, protecting our environment, combating the opioid epidemic, and preventing elder abuse. And whereas senior corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that makes a lasting impact on the individuals and communities they serve. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the city commission and the citizens of Pahokee that by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Pahokee do hereby designate April twenty-ninth through May fifth as senior corps week.
Commissioner, I'm gonna pause and have a break in deliberation. Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin has a point of privilege. Uh, Commissioner Mervin, could you state your point?
Yes, we have, um, our senior citizens, our volunteers that is here tonight. That are, they're the ones that actually sent in the proclamation for senior corps week. We have the director and a couple of the seniors. So we can recognize the seniors that's here tonight.
Okay, with the seniors standing and be recognized. That's a great way to use your point of privilege. I wasn't quite hearing what she was saying, which was trying to get my attention. Again, we, uh, thank you all for coming and appreciate everything you do, uh, to assist this city. Haven't had, haven't had the proclamation properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, commissioners. What's your pleasure?
I move to adopt the proclamation for the senior corps week.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Walker for the adoption of the proclamation, uh, proclaiming senior corp week. Call for questions.
Question? I I I recommend the same same recognition. The senior kids some recognition.
Okay.
Mission for the seniors.
I'm gonna do this.
Sometime a recognition for them.
Right. Maybe maybe we can, uh, especially those that, uh, are working and active with our senior group. We can at some later date give them certificates of, uh, recognition and appreciation. Uh, I know y'all seniors don't like to stand up again, but would you stand up one more time to be recognized? Thank you.
Piece of party or something for them.
Hearing no additional question. Are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, commissioners. The proclamation passes by unanimous vote. Now we're moving to presentation. We had the presentation to the robotic robotic club team. I keep saying team. I'm gonna say club, but it's team uh, earlier in our workshop. Uh, so we're gonna move into the, uh, businesses of the month. This month, uh, Commissioner Hill selected two businesses of the month. Uh, we're gonna allow her to do one of the presentation and let her co- colleagues just choose a one to do the second, uh, presentation. So if the commission will come down, and we will present these two, uh, businesses of the month. I'm not sure if they're both here, but we're gonna make the.
They're not here.
Recognition either way. Neither one is here? Neither business. Okay, we'll have, uh, Commissioner Hill from here just recognize the two businesses. Well, we'll let, uh, Commissioner Mervin, since she already have a second one, Commissioner Hill.
We have, uh, normally we do, uh, the business of the month here, each commissioner. The my two businesses that I chose was, uh, presented to Regina Bernice Butler Daycare, located at three eighty-seven Bangin Avenue, Pahokee, Florida, three three four seven six. In recognition of outstanding service to the community on presented, presented on this eighth day of May, two thousand eighteen, we'd like to, uh, thank her for all the hard work she does in the community, especially with the daycare she has. She has a wonderful daycare. And the other business I chose was, um, Mr. Commissioner Mervin?
The other business is, uh, business of the month is pre- presented to Leonard Mobile Tires, three eighty-seven B, Pahokee, Florida, three three four seven six. If you, uh, can't get out your driveway, your tire's flat, you can call Leonard. He will be at your driveway. He has a mobile. I mean, he goes everywhere. At the schools, I mean, side of the road, wha- whatever. He's there. So you call him, Leonard will be there.
Thank you for recognizing those two, uh, businesses. As we always do, we're liking to encourage our residents to support those two businesses as well as all of our, uh, local businesses. Uh, our goal is to try to attract additional businesses in here in the city of Pahokee to create jobs and activities and services for all our citizens. But it's important that those that we have, that we all support them, because it's hard to remain in business when you don't have the local support. So we're just gonna encourage you to continue to do that. Uh, ne- next we're moving to the mayor's report and it's.
Mayor, uh, employee of the quarter, employee of the year, presentation.
Okay. We'll do the employee of the quarter first. Uh, we'll have the commission come down. Uh, we have Chandler kinda give an overview of why these individuals were selected in our present, the, uh, mula.
No, too much work out.
All right. Good evening. Uh, this, uh, award.
Good evening, this award is for Employee of the Quarter, we do here in the City of Pahokee for Employees of the Quarter, starting in August of each year, and it goes throughout until May, and it culminates with an Employee of the Year selection, just in time for our Commission, Chamber of Commerce Awards on this Friday, so the fourth quarter of the, the fourth quarter employee selected was Nyleen Clark, Nyleen, please come up. Nyleen works in our Building, Plant, and Zoning Department. And she works in the Building, Plant, and Zoning Department, she also serves when the Clerk's not here, she's a standing for interim Deputy City Clerk. In addition to that, when there is an overflow, when there's need for assistance at the cemetery, or when Ms. Kelly is out, Nyleen actually goes out there and runs the administrative part out at the cemetery, and so she's had quite the dual role responsibility in the City of Pahokee, she knows her way around City Hall and those departments, and of course she's also in school, she's working to finish up her undergrad degree, I think is public management, public management? Public management, so she's hopefully be a long-term government employee, maybe for the City of Pahokee, or wherever her destination lands her, but professional, knowledgeable, certainly high integrity, and we are very lucky to have her in the City of Pahokee with us, and so congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Mervin, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Everett, and myself, along with our entire City staff, it is indeed an honor to present you this check for Employee of the Quarter, and as usual, we're gonna ask you, this is a lot of money, if you can just spend it here locally, with our local business, it would be appreciated, but you wear minute hats in this city, we see you everywhere, and we appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to this city, thank you so much. We never put folks on the spot, but we're gonna ask you if you would, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next we'll have our Employee of the Year, and this person's gonna be recognized at our Chamber of Banquet, which is coming up real soon, thank you.
All right, as I said, we select four of these individuals every year, and it culminates with someone being selected as the Employee of the Year, and we had, you know, four great Employees of the Quarter, and we can't select everyone, and it was very difficult this year, actually, Nyleen Clark was, you know, in the strong running for Employee of the Year, she wears multiple hats, and so selecting this individual, you know, was difficult, but Employee of the Year is Angelica Reyes, Angelica, come on up, please. Angelica, when I first got here in two thousand fifteen, we had exodus of those in the Financial Department, and Angelica Reyes, along with actually Nyleen and Ms. Flanco, were really the original staff that remained, and a lot of folks don't know it, but Angelica Reyes in two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, she actually ran that Financial Department, and she ran it very well, and she had to be a quick study, and really keep us afloat here for quite some time, and in addition to that, Reyes is in school full-time, and I think Finance, correct? In Finance, and she graduates August? August, F I U, and F I U is not in Pahokee, F I U is in Miami, she has to drive to Miami to go to school, she's not, you know, I think she has one course online, but she had to physically drive to F I U in Miami to finish her undergrad degree in Finance. In addition to that, she also had a part-time job here at Family Dollars for quite some time, so she was working a full-time job, part-time job, and she was going to school full-time, and she's all A's. So, in addition to that, she's made sure that her responsibilities in the Finance Department were fully, you know, addressed on a daily basis, she has a high level of integrity, she's certainly fun to work with, she's very knowledgeable, she tries to learn as much as she can, just recently on her last evaluation, I said, one thing we need to do is ensure you get, you know, continued certifications in this area, so she'll be going off to a conference here at the end of May to increase some of her knowledge in the fiscal part of financial management for government, but again, a great employee, very dedicated to the City of Pahokee, has really labored here in the City of Pahokee in that position that she worked on her undergrad degree, and so we want to recognize her tonight as Employee of the Year for the City of Pahokee.
It's a minor discrepancy, the check and the certificate reads two different names, last names, so correct that, but again, Reyes, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Diane Walker, Commissioner Felicia Hill, and Commissioner Benny Everett, along with myself, City Manager and our entire staff, congratulate you, thank you for all your hard work and dedication, to be Employee of the Year, that's big, I mean, there's a lot of folks working, and that's a award that a lot of people don't have the opportunity to attain, so we do appreciate everything you do, you wear a lot of hats in the city, you're everywhere, you're doing everything, and you certainly have been noticed, and we certainly appreciate that. I'm gonna have our Commissioner Hill and our Vice Mayor present the certificate and the check, because I will be presenting the Employee of the Year to you at the Chamber Banquet, so I'm gonna allow them to do this presentation.
It reads Employee of the Year, City of Pahokee in recognition of outstanding service presented to Angelica Reyes, presented this eighth day of May two thousand eighteen.
Getting a little confused sometimes.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, he just told me the total of this, you don't have to do it all in Pahokee,
So we're moving to the, again, congratulations to both employees for their awards, and again,
go to the mall, girl. You just said something here, but go to the mall, and enjoy yourself.
thank you for all that you do for the City of Pahokee. We'll move into the Mayor's Report, which is really, really brief. Again, Ms. Reyes, we don't put people on the spot here, not in the City of Pahokee, Everglade Perpetuary Academy had their graduation today, I think most of our Commissioners were there, it's a great graduation, I'm not sure how many young men's and ladies but would you like to say a few words, if you would? they had graduated, I counted maybe thirty-five, could be a lot more than that, I'm not sure,
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity, and it's a pleasure to be a part of City of Pahokee.
but it was a beautiful graduation, they had a reception here at the school, so we want to congratulate all the two thousand eighteen graduates. On May twenty-second, second, Pahokee High School will be graduating, and this Commission has decided to cancel our regular City Commission meeting for those who came in a little late, we're gonna be celebrating that occasion with them, as the City Manager indicated, if we do have any things that we need to take care of in the interim, we'll call a special meeting to sign any type of contracts, or make any motions that need to be made in reference to the marina, because we want that to continue to proceed at lightning speed if possible. Commissioner Everett brought up the point at our last Commission meeting about family activity, and the possibility if we was ever considering an additional board, that would be one that we should look at, I just want to mention the fact that our Community Relation Board, that is one of the things that they should be doing, and we need to just encourage them to do that, either the Clerk, the City Manager, or myself, or even the Commissioners can attend their meeting and make sure that that's one of the things that they can help focus on, and the same token, the City need to utilize the Community Relation Board even more, when we have activity, whether it's I Love Pahokee, or any type of major signature event, that they're involved in the planning and organizing and the participation of it, but that's something they may can come up with a signature, an additional signature event, we are trying to extend some of the activity that we all currently provide, like the I Love Pahokee, I think this year, we had about four hours of activity, maybe next year we can have six, car shows, boat shows, whatever, but we want to make sure that's a family activity, and we need to encourage our residents to come out and participate in those activities, that gives staff and this Commission a little more motivation to wanna provide other activity, because we know it's a family gathering, and it's a community gathering, and everyone is enjoying themselves and taking part in. And again, that's the end of my report, I've been losing things to other than forgetting, I have a little more information, but I'll share that at our next Commission meeting. We're gonna move into our City Manager Report, Shannon Williamson.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, Residents, Citizens, Visitors, thanks for coming out Just a few updates, we did our pre-bid meetings on Glaze Citizens Villa, Glaze Citizens Villa is receiving stormwater and complete resurfacing in all of their streets, it's been quite some time to get to this point, but we are now accepting those bids, once we get those bids in, consult with the City Attorney and let them know which way we're gonna move forward with whatever bid wins that opportunity to improve Glaze Citizens Villa. So those of you who are Residents out there, and you see that sign up front, trust me, we're weeks away from starting significant improvement of those streets out there in Glaze Citizens Villa. In addition to that, Commissioners Park, that also received state funding of about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we had a pre-bid meeting on that as well, and we'll begin now accepting those bids for that project, so hopefully we can get these projects moving by early June of this year. Significant improvements in Commissioners Park as well, including some additional lighting, we're gonna try to figure out what's wrong with the splash pad as far as the flooding and the leaking of the water on the ground, of course, the tennis courts that we're gonna fix, and the basketball court, and some other amenities that need to be added, so we're moving forward with those two projects. Gymnasium, we've always had some spirited conversations up here about the gymnasium and how to get that gym back open, I've had some very constructive conversations with the county, they're back in the picture in assisting us in getting those renovations restarted, we're hoping to have some more answers from the county on the funding that they're going to assist us with, assist the city with in getting that renovation back up. Don't know a timeline as far as when the gym will be open, but I can assure you that those renovations will start, the conversations I've had with the county have been very productive, they're fully on board with assisting us in getting the gym back open, so hopefully not next Commission meeting, but maybe following, we'll have something in line here, and you'll see folks going back to work to get the gymnasium part, just the gymnasium part right now open, that's the first level, we realize on the second level, you have the athletic locker rooms, weight room, classrooms, that'll be a secondary phase, right now, the county wants to ensure that we get that gymnasium back open as quickly as possible, so that's good news for us, for the City of Pahokee, for all of our youth, for our kids, for our seniors, we anticipate, you know, midnight basketball, jazzercise early in the mornings, evening classes for exercise, more intermural sports, and other activities, more large activities that the cities have been unable to hold, and we had to go over to the high school for their gymnasium, so we're looking forward to getting that renovation back up and moving here fairly soon, so that's good news for the City of Pahokee. In addition to that, as you know, we have surtax dollars, and some of those surtax dollars are gonna, again, go back to Parks and Recreation, we'll be starting some extensive painting and removing of old flooring around a lot of these classrooms, the senior room, you'll see some dramatic improvements here over the course of the next sixty days, as we move into the summer enrichment program for Parks and Recs. Also at Parks and Recreation, I've been talking about what we needed to, what we need to do with our facilities, as the football field is concerned, we've been in continued communications with a particular company that installs the artificial turf, and we're very close to bringing a conversation to this dais about moving forward with installing artificial turf, and also seating for that football field. I was sitting down with the City Attorney, we'll have a conversation, we're actually gonna have a financial conversation first before we bring it to the Commission, because the house design, it is a long-term commitment, but it's worth the commitment that we're gonna do, so for a long time, we haven't had a good football field that we can call our own here in the City of Pahokee for our city teams, and we are hopefully about to install one of the best artificial fields that you typically see in NFL and Division One football stadiums around the nation, so that's coming, and we're very close to having that conversation with the Commission about, for the first time, I'm gonna put you in some debt, and so I hope you'll allow me to do that for you and for this city, but you'll be pleased with what we are going to present to you as far as a new football field for the City of Pahokee for Parks and Recreation. The old water plant, if you haven't noticed, is coming down slowly but surely, I think they're about fifty percent in now with the water plant, and I'm assuming maybe through this month, closer to June, they'll be, they're gonna wrap up, I don't have a timeline when they're gonna be complete, but they have significantly demolished the old water plant, and hopefully that'll be an opportunity for the city, because it's city-owned property, that we have an opportunity to build something else there in its place, but they're about fifty percent in, they're getting to the difficult labor of this water plant, and that is the piping that goes four and five feet down into the ground, that's significant work that they have to do in that particular building before they can demolish it, and so they're moving, you know, aggressively, but again, we anticipate, you know, the latter parts of May, maybe on into June, where that place will be completely leveled out in that particular location. In addition to that, we got notice that we got an additional two-hundred, let me back up, last Commission meeting, I announced that we got three-hundred thousand dollars for brownfields research here in the City of Pahokee, that grant comes from the U.S. Department of Environmental Protection, again, over, I think over a hundred municipalities applied for that grant, and we were only, I think they only gave out maybe ten or twelve across the nation, and we were lucky to secure that grant, what that grant does is, it allows scientists to come in and test all of these areas, for example, the water plant, the soil, to ensure that it's viable for redevelopment, if it's not viable for redevelopment, and they detect that, then they go after additional dollars to clean up any type of environmental questions that we may have. That's great, because if an investor wants to come in and buy a piece of property that's owned by the city, and it's already been vetted for clearance of environmental contamination, then it's easier for that investment to, easier for that investor to actually purchase that piece of property and build a new on that particular piece of property, so excited about that. In addition to that, we got another two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for Glaze resurfacing, through the Glaze resurfacing project, we haven't had a resurfacing project in about a year, and so we got an additional two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars announced last week to the City of Pahokee, and so some of these streets that we have resurfaced, some of the connecting streets, we'll go back and we'll continue our Glaze resurfacing project around the City of Pahokee, so that's, again, great news for the City of Pahokee. I know a lot of folks have been asking about when Barfield's gonna get started, that's a four-point-six-million-dollar project already awarded to the City of Pahokee, from last time we checked with Florida Department of Transportation, we're looking at mid to late summer before they Again, over, I think over a hundred municipalities applied for that grant. And we were only, I think they only gave out maybe ten or twelve across the nation. And we were lucky to secure that grant. What that grant does is, it allows scientists to come in and test all of these areas. For example, the water plant, the soil, to ensure that it's viable for redevelopment. If it's not viable for redevelopment, and they detect that, then they go after additional dollars to clean up any type of environmental questions that we may have. That's great, because if an investor wants to come in and buy a piece of property that's owned by the city. And it's already been vetted for clearance of environmental contamination, then it's easier for that investment to. It's easier for that investor to actually purchase that piece of property and build a new on that particular piece of property. So excited about that. In addition to that, we got another two hundred and ten thousand dollars for Glaze resurfacing, through the Glaze resurfacing project. We haven't had a resurfacing project in about a year. And so we got an additional two hundred and ten thousand dollars announced last week to the city of Pahokee. And so some of these streets that we have resurfaced, some of the connecting streets, we'll go back and we'll continue our Glaze resurfacing project around the city of Pahokee. So that's, again, great news for the city of Pahokee. I know a lot of folks have been asking about when Barfield's going to get started. That's a four point six million dollar project already awarded to the city of Pahokee. From last time, we checked with Florida Department of Transportation, we're looking at mid to late summer before they can come out and start their preliminary work. And study on how they're going to reconstruct that entire highway. Long time coming, we all drive on Barfield Highway, and we know what it feels like. And so we're excited, we're going to be excited when that project gets started. But for right now, Glaze Citizen Villa and Commissioners Park will be the next two big projects. Outside of the Marina project that's coming online slowly but surely over the next several weeks that we're going to address. Ted, Mayor, Commissioner.
Thank you, city manager. City Commissioner, are there any additional questions for the city manager? Just got one or two quick updates, and if you don't have the dates, that's fine. But we haven't heard anything about the old hospital in recent weeks. What's the status there?
We originally had a buyer for the hospital. The city attorney was working with that particular interest group. We got down to where we were supposed to get some closing costs in an assignment, in an assigned contract. They sort of backed away from that for whatever particular reasons the investors behind the buyer had a change of heart. So we had a secondary plan that I did not mention to the city that we're working on now. And we're hopeful, hopeful that this secondary interested party will move forward with purchasing the hospital. But there are some things that the city attorney has provided to this particular buyer. He's given her, he's given them a timeline on when they need to respond. I believe that's the end of this week. And then hopefully, by the next commission meeting, we'll have something to present to the commission on the old hospital.
Old Pahokee High School, the site that we're going to do pressure cleaning and painting, where we're at?
I've actually already received a quote so we can build a bid for the old Pahokee High School. That should be going out here in the next five to ten days. But that's what we need is to get a quote, and we got those two quotes now, just to kind of gauge what the cost would be. So we can develop an actual bid to advertise. So we're very close to putting that bid out.
Keep Mr. Morrison from getting up. The town hall meeting, quarterly meeting that we authorized doing, have you scheduled a first date for a possible town hall meeting?
No, what I wanted to do, typically in a lot of cities, commissioners get to host their own town hall meetings. And I wanted to first engage commissioners who wanted to host their own town hall meetings on behalf of the city. Or we can just do a broad town hall meeting where it's a city manager's town hall meeting. But I want to give the commissioners an opportunity to host their own individual town hall meetings or collective town hall meetings. But typically, I host a town hall meeting from the city manager's perspective. And I don't want to dominate the market by doing that moving forward. I would, you know, assist if commissioners wanted to host town hall meetings, but I haven't had any dates yet.
I think we need to do it in culmination.
Right.
I mean, you're hosting, but they have a part of it that they can participate in.
That's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, I think that'll be more.
But I don't have any dates yet, but I know the first date will be in June of this year.
And some folks may come to speak on this, but I just want to just have you touch base on this here. Our permits, as far as yard selling permits and the use of parks and football fields. If you can just, just for the audience and our residents' information, if you can quickly kind of go over that.
Which type of permit?
Having a permit to use a football field or a park.
Okay, for an organized activity. Like all city facilities, if you, if we're not hosting an event ourselves, and an outside entity wants to utilize city property for an organized event. It's the standard process, they come in and talk to the director of Parks and Recreation first. We see if the date's available, they're given the application, and there are some prerequisites there that they have to complete before it's approved. One of those prerequisites is make sure that you have liability insurance to protect the kids that are being active in these activities. That protects the actual event, that protects the city for any liability. And it also ensures that if something does happen, that everybody's identified, out covered, just in case that happens. And so once they get the application, a date set, and they have those prerequisites in place. Then that application moves from the department over to the administration in City Hall. I review it, I look at the, ensure that there has been a deposit received. And that everything has been reviewed as far as what facility they're using. Sometimes it's just the senior room or the cafeteria, there's a pre-inspection. So I want to check off to ensure that they, there's been a pre-inspection before that, before I sign off on it. And once all those things are in place, we got the deposit, there's been liability insurance insured, because it's not a city event, it's an outside external event, even though it's on city property. Then I approve it. And then the application goes back to the director, she makes a copy or he makes a copy. And then that person that's hosting the event, they have a copy with them on site. So if anything occurs, they have proof that they've been approved to use city facilities. And that's not just for athletic field, that's for the senior room, that's for the cafeteria, that's for M and K Park, that's for Commissioners Park. And that's been the standard that we've had here in the city of Pahokee. And that's, and that's not a permit, that's an application of approval to use city facilities, that's not an actual permit. Unless it's like in the park and there's a concert, there's additional permits, you have to do like Noah's ordinance and things like that. But that's just approval to use our facilities.
Okay. I'll move on with my question, that should be it. But I think at some point, we need to come back as a commission and address some of those concerns. Because it get into a point where unless you have an organized application or permit, for lack of a better word. That residents are not able to utilize a city park or field.
Let me correct that. Anybody can go out there with their kids, throw the football around, or kick the soccer ball. That's, that's always welcome, that's not prevented whatsoever at all. You can take five kids out there and throw the football around, kick the soccer ball around, and have a sandlot pickup game. That's just, that's fine. But when you bring in an outside organization that's going to hold organized sports, and they're, and it's advertised as organized sports. And you're using all types of equipment, et cetera, that's no longer, I've got five kids and we doing sandlot football. That's an organized sport, that's an organized event, and that's why we had the application in place for that. So it's a difference. So the city football field is always open for families to go out there and kick the football, the soccer ball around, or throw the football around. But when you have an organized event, you have to get city approval for that. Because if there's an organized event and it's not been approved by the city, someone gets hurt, the city's held liable. And so we just want to ensure it's in proper place. This particular, you know, conversation came about because that did occur just recently. And I had a conversation with the gentleman that was hosting it last night, we had a very extensive conversation about how to properly, you know, ensure that he has approval to utilize city property. He understood. He actually came back and said, hey, Mr. Wilson, we'll do this, you know, better next time. To ensure that everything is above board and we do it with the right approval. A lot of miscommunication there. But moving forward, you know, we're going to work, you know, very closely with this particular entity to ensure that when they want to utilize and have an organized event like that. That we're not only give them approval, but we also support it in some type of way from a city perspective, just beyond the facility itself. And so good conversation that we had with that organizer last night.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm back, yeah.
Since I did mention that, if we can briefly, there has been some concern in the community about not having the ability now to have organized yard sales. Even if it's on a commercial property where the owner has given written consent to allow them to use it.
Our ordinance, let me, let me back up. If you want to have a garage sale at your house in a residential area, you're certainly welcome to do that. Right now, our ordinance say that if you want to have a garage sale at your house, there is a one-time annual fee of twenty-five dollars. Now, that, that particular ordinance, resolution, sorry. It says one-time annual fee of twenty-five dollars. Typically, most cities, each time you have a garage sale at your house, you got to come pay that twenty-five dollar permit. But right now, our ordinance say it's just one-time annual twenty-five dollars. And we had to go back and research that because there was some miscommunication of, do you pay this each time you have a yard sale at your house? Or do you pay it one time? Well, actually, you pay it one time. And if the commission wants to go back and address that, that's their pleasure. But right now, code enforcement officers, they can only address things that are outside of compliance. And right now, it says in our ordinance that if you want to have a yard sale at your house, you're certainly welcome to do that. There's a one-time annual fee to get a garage permit, as you, as you could say, to have their garage sales at their house. Now, if you have a sale or sale of items, as you know, outside of residential areas, that's not your home. We passed the ordinance some time ago about thrift stores and sale of items in the core of the city. In addition to that, we have an ordinance, and I'm going to yield to the city attorney here in a moment. That if you want to sell particular items, food, clothes, furniture, you can do that in the commercial areas of the city. And not the residential corridors of the city. And that's what is cited in our ordinance. And so recently, you know, we've been looking at our zoning, where residential is zoned, where commercial is zoned. And what is actually the proper areas where those type of vendors can set up with permission, if it's not their own property, to operate. And so we're just clarifying some of those areas zoned where it's residential, where it's zone commercial where it actually is allowed. And I think, you know, we've had the practice of some of those activities of garage sales that are in residential areas that's not at a residence. Has occurred just on the side of the street in a residential area. And those are the things that the code enforcement was addressing. And when they went back and read the ordinance, they realized that you can only do these things in the commercially zoned areas. But unfortunately, some of the practices of what we've been doing have occurred in the residential zoned area of the city. And so we went back and forth with this building plan and the zoning about exactly where the residential areas are in the city. And exactly where the zone commercial areas are in the city to actually host these types of vendor sales, or peddler sales, as they say. Stationary in the community. And so it was, you know, rather interesting to look at that nineteen eighty-four resolution, I mean ordinance. And then realize that we've sort of, we've gotten away from exactly enforcing our zoning where that can occur. And I think, you know, we're going to continue working with our, with our citizens to inform them exactly, you know, where these exact, these zones are for residents. Where you can do that type of activity, and where the commercial zones are in the city where you should be operating. And so it's, it's a change, but again, you know, when you want to do those, those type of activities, our zoning and our ordinance say, commercial. And then last year, you passed the ordinance that said for thrift store sales on the outside and display of items can't happen in the core of the city. And so we've shrunk, you know, significantly to areas between the core and the commercial areas where you can actually do these types of sales. And so what we're committed to is working with our residents to identify, if they're not doing it at their home, residence. Where they can identify where they can actually do these sales of stationary vendor sales for whatever items that they have in the commercial zone. I want to yield to the city attorney if he can, you know, probably clarify everything I just said about that.
No, I agree with the city manager on his interpretation of the current law indicates that stationary peddlers can only be in locations zoned for commercial activity. And from sunrise to sunset. And obviously, you have to have the permission of the person who owns the property to hold sale on it.
Yeah, and I would say this in conclusion, Rodden is going to be very tricky. Because all down that stretch is both commercial and residential.
That's not correct. It's all zone residential.
At one point, at least twelve businesses was located down there. You had a restaurant, you had Mr. Wright's store, you had Minor's store, you had Icon Store, you had like twelve. You got the liquor store there. It's a mixed zoning area for as I'm concerned, but I don't know, I haven't looked at the recent.
Zone residential.
So how would the business able to do?
You have to remember, there was, it was zone residential, it's not zone commercial whatsoever. And the practice of it, of allowing businesses to set up, we just kind of just got away from the zoning. And allow those businesses to operate in that residential area. But that particular corridor right there, what you're speaking of, is residential. And it, trust me, it took me half a day, I believe, to, for us to really look at our maps and go, where exactly is residential? When you get to Rodden, and then you move back over to South Lake, which immediately switches to commercial. And so if you're looking at the map, there's an interpretation that you may think that you're in commercial, which you're really not. But on top of that, you have businesses that pretty much have been grandfathered in in that zoning area. That's really just defined for residential, it's been that way for a long time. But we've allowed other businesses to operate as commercial businesses in residential areas, which is why you have those stores there, the liquor store. That zone just has never been enforced to the degree that it should be. And we're moving towards that area of making change in the zoning and how we enforce the zoning in our code of ordinances. And just unfortunately, Rodden Avenue is zone residential. So again, we want to work with all of our, our residents to help them locate the proper areas where they can. As the city attorney said, be stationary peddlers, as vendors in the city. We certainly are not trying to distract or prevent anyone from doing those types of activities. It's just particular locations that you can do it per our zoning law now.
Ma'am, you can speak during a citizen comment if you have a card right now.
So we're going to work closely with everyone that, you know, has been, has had this practice. To ensure that everybody's in compliance, to ensure that everyone understands the difference between residential and zoning. But, you know, we took a look at that, you know, we got businesses in this area, how can it possibly be only residential? But it's only residential on Rodden Avenue, unfortunately, and that's because we got away from the practice of enforcing our zoning here in the city of Pahokee.
I know, we were sending a tattoo guy there.
But that's further up Rodden, that's, that's back into the core.
That's one of the things we can probably include in our first town hall meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring the maps and we'll, we'll, we'll show them where everything is and try to outline it so everyone is clear. About what's, what's zone commercial, what's zone residential, what's core, what's mixed use, what is light industrial. You know, we had, you know, Leonard, tire service on here tonight. You know, we went back and forth with Leonard about where he can operate in the city until he was, you know, he understood exactly where he could operate. So it's just a conversation that we need to have, and maybe that's one we can save for the town hall meeting.
Commissioner Everett is being recognized.
I guess my question was somewhat answered, but beyond conversation, what's going to be our, the city's recourse? In addressing what appears to be a concern? Because in, in listening, I must admittedly state that I'm somewhat confused because I was under a different impression. Because of businesses and churches outlining Rodden, that, that would place that, 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 that whole area essentially in residential. Is it, are we a hundred percent sure that it's not listed as both? You know, not, not questioning your, your knowledge and what you've researched, so is, or is it spotty in terms of where it is?
It's, it's not, it's, it's not spotty, it's, it's very clear where residential is. As you move up Rodden North, it transitions back into the core into commercial. So it's not spotty in that, if you, if you get right there at where you say the Parker Building is, what we call the Parker Building, and you go back south. That is designated residential, but as you move back north, where the Thriftway Store is, I think it's Thriftway. That scatters back into mixed use, core, and commercial. And you also will see that same representation on South Lake going north and going south. Where if you come through into the city from the fire station, and as you go up South Lake, all that corridor, even where Commissioner Walker lives, is mixed use residential and commercial. But when you step on the other side of the street onto Rodden, all of that's residential. And that's why you have O.S.A. on one side of the building and mixed use housing on the, on the other side of the street, because that's mixed. That's, that's mixed core and residential. On Rodden, it's all residential to a certain, you know, street, I think it's Third Street. Then it switches back, you know, into the core, into that commercial use where you can use, you can build a house, you can have businesses, and et cetera.
And the reason why I guess I'm following with a question or two, because two, two days straight, I couldn't go into the parsonage without being questioned about this. So, so is it safe to say if I have been granted permission to set up at Thriftway by the owner, that won't be a problem?
Well, you got to remember something. Last year, we passed an ordinance about what you can sell publicly in the core of the city. And that is something that, you know, I can reflect back to the city attorney. But I believe that only referenced Thriftway Stores and advertising of putting things outside. But that ordinance, I think, addressed, you know, selling things on the outside in the core of the city, you can only do it, you know, in the light industrial areas. And that's why they created that ordinance about a year ago. However, however, as the mayor said, if someone goes into a commer- However, however, as the mayor said, if someone goes into a commercial area like on South Lake and they have authority to be there on the commercial property, they can certainly sell there. But as the city attorney has said, what wasn't enforced too was dusted on. As you know, there's a lot of things that are being sold well beyond, you know, 8:00 PM in the city of Pahokee. That ordinance was never enforced before. You were out there with me when we did, you know, the Great American Cleanup. You saw the aftermath of an evening on Rodden Avenue, wasn't nice. That doesn't mean that's why we're enforcing this ordinance, but it also goes to the fact that we have a lot of things that we have to clean up in order to increase our economic development. I want housing on Rodden, and it has the largest landmass for residential housing with the largest empty lots that we don't own. But at the same time, you know, we, we have to look at our ordinances and where they apply and how we can clean up some of these things that we weren't enforcing before through code enforcement.
Commissioner Hill.
Oh, no, he answered the question because one, I was concerned about South, South Lake. You're great, and I, I think a lot of the information is on SBA website. So you're correct, it is a mixture, but it also answered a question I had years ago when they were getting certain businesses receive funds down a certain, yes, street. And it stopped at a certain business all the way back up, so that does answer my question, so. But citizens, you can't go on SBA website and it'll show you exactly which areas are designated, commercial, residential, mixture, you, you'll see it. And it, it'll help you understand a little more of what he's talking about.
Something was directed to the attorney with regards to Thriftway.
Thrift stores.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying, if in, in setting up, what's allowed per the ordinance and what's not allowed? If the owner grants me an op, grants me permission to set up at Thriftway?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna have to review that for you, that whole area, and maybe write a memo for the entire board for your next meeting. I can't really summarize that off the top of my head from memory.
Okay, thank you.
But, but I do say, but I do remember the ordinance that we passed. I think it was for thrift stores, not for someone that wanted to sell something. I think it was just thrift stores. Once they be on the outside, once they close, they have to bring everything on the inside.
Correct.
But so I think you still, whoever have a yard sale can sell, you know.
Correct, they just have to buy, buy those, that dusted on.
That timeframe, yeah.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Hopefully they have some cards that they can make comments at that time. Uh, city attorney report.
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, Techno Marine has not agreed to return any of the city's funds. So I would like permission from the commission to proceed with legal action against Techno Marine.
So moved. Second.
It's been.
I motion, I motion for the, the city attorney to go after the $125,000 from Techno Marine.
The move by Vice Mayor Mervin and second by Commissioner Hill to give the city attorney the authorization to go after the $125,000 that is owed to us by Techno Marine. Call for questions. Here in, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Hill.
Hill? Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, commissioners. Motion passed unanimously. City attorney.
That's all.
Thank you, sir. No business, have no business, new business, no new business.
Mayor, just upon a privilege, we are planning a wonderful 4th of July event here on the Marina this year again for fireworks display. We may be adding a little wrinkle to it this year, we're not sure yet, but we're in the process of planning a great fireworks show for 4th of July on the Marina, Lake, Lake Okeechobee.
We had a lot of compliments about last year's show, so hopefully it's even better. Thank you. Now we're moving to our citizen comments and general concern. Again, you must have a comment card completed. Madam Clerk, at this time, do we have any comments cards?
Yes, sir, Mr. Alfonso Smith, Jr.
Represent yourself. That's what I put on the card, represent me. How are you doing, babe?
I'm doing great.
Hey, I'm coming here on behalf of the athletics at the parking rec. I got a historical phone call from two of my kids that played for me this year screaming that our coach Jonathan Johnson was fired from his job, which I found out later that it wasn't true. He was contemplating resignation or submitted a resignation. And I found that really disturbing because a lot of you guys who are Pahokee residents know Coach J has impacted over 1,000 kids in a positive way. I'm one of those kids. And there are a ton of kids around here that love Coach J. Now, it's really for, I really wanna come up here and help the kids and help out Mr. Williamson because he doesn't know Coach J like we do. And I understand that you have several frustrations with Coach J. And I wanna say to you, don't allow your frustrations to rear the head of the frustrations from people who love Coach J, you know? And I'm one of those guys who's frustrated by the situation because Coach J has a knack for influencing and mentoring and inspiring kids in this community. And the fact that he was about to be disciplined or subjected to discipline based on an allegation or based on hearsay, anything without, or a situation that has no factual basis to support the claims that were made against him is ridiculous, you know? And quite frankly, just to be frank and transparent and blunt, you know, Coach J or no city employee can endure or afford to have a three-day suspension with no pay. You know, we only have one city of Pahokee employee that can afford that and the other is contracted by the city, which is our city attorney and city manager. So I would strongly consider, and I, I'm, no, I'm not taking any shots because Chandler is really good at what he does, you know, you are, and I have a ton of respect for you. You're, you're great, you're probably the best city manager that we've seen that can go out, track funds, and do the things that you need to do for our city moving forward. But I really would strongly consider challenging the commission to have a talk with you, Mr. Chandler, and challenge you to have a talk with Coach J and reconsider that decision because he's an asset to our city. He's an asset, he's been an asset for 20 years. And I would, on your behalf, I don't want, I don't want this to cause a trickle-down effect whereas a lot of people are upset and now people, instead of, you know, a three-day suspension for Coach J with no pay, you have thousands of people who are taking shots at you to get you removed with no pay. So I wouldn't want that for you, and ultimately I don't want that for our kids. I don't want that for the city of Pahokee because, quite frankly, Coach J's a legend. He's a legend, he's a legend to me, he's a legend to the kids that call me. And, you know, I don't think, I don't think that, I don't think that, that decision was well thought out and I feel like we need to reconsider that decision. And I'll support you in that decision of your reconsideration. And I'm just telling you what's coming. There are a lot of people who are upset, and I wouldn't want your decision with Coach J to, you know, cause some pressure on this commission because it's gonna come. I'm telling you it's gonna come.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Smith, appreciate that.
All right. She's gonna give me her three minutes. No, I don't want your three minutes, but, but yeah, so, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's something that we need to talk about, or you guys need to talk about, because, you know, based on a camp that was gonna be held for kids. And I understand there are legalities, but, I mean, I've been 32 years old, I've been around Pahokee. We pick and choose when we wanna use our legalities, depending upon what it is and whether we like it or not. I'm just being honest. And, you know, that, again, Chandler, you're, you're awesome at what you do, you know, but I also think you can, you can be better as it relates to managing your people, managing the people around you. And though Coach J does have computer, computer literacy problems and administrative problems, that's not him. But it, it's really important to use the asset that he gives or to utilize his skillset, which is coaching, you know? And quite frankly, quite frankly, I just hope, I hope you, you give him a call tomorrow or give him a call tonight and get him up there and you guys talk about it like men because if I was you, I have, I have this, I have a copy of his resignation letter because I went down there and I'm like, what, what are you doing? That's what I asked Coach J, what are you doing? If I was you, Chandler, I'm pulling this up. I wouldn't wanna accept this if I was you, because this comes with stipulations. And I'm not talking about stipulations for Coach J. It comes from stipulations from them. All the people that love him, all the people who kids have came through his program, himself, Coach Osborne, James Scott, Herb Crawford, Alvin Johnson, Tyrone Claravan, thousands of kids who have love for him, thousands of parents who have love for Coach J. I wouldn't accept it because of the stipulations. I would urge you guys to talk to him because it's gonna come with stipulations with you two, with you guys too. And I wouldn't want that pressure based on a hearsay, someone said this and someone said that. If it's nothing egregious, I mean, let's just be honest, it's nothing to, you know, suspend someone for, for a hearsay, you know? And the stipulations are these people talking about signing petitions. And Bab, you saw it on Facebook today, talking about signing petitions and all of that stuff. Can you imagine that? As great as you are, can you ima, I don't want that for you, Chandler, honestly. I don't want that for you, and I don't want this for this commission facing that kind of pressure based on a hearsay, getting rid of a guy because of a camp, because we didn't have a permit signed for a camp for kids. We talking about kids, you know, and it's the truth, it's kids. But you guys, you, you have a, you have a, the, your job is to protect the city, but ultimately, we, we still talking about kids in Pahokee and someone coming here to throw a free camp. You know, I don't want, again, I don't wanna go, I've, I've been long-winded, but I have to reiterate the fact that I don't want that for this commission because you guys are on the right track. I don't want that for you, Chandler, because you damn good at what you do, you know? So reconsider that decision and talk with Coach J. I've talked to Coach J and I say, hey, you have to, you have to get on board, you have to get on the ship because he's an asset to this city. He's an asset to every kid that come through here, they love him to death. So thank you for your time and hopefully you reconsider, all right?
Thank you, thank you. I guess everybody know Alfonso, but those who don't, he was a star football player for Pohque High School, NFL player, and the head football coach at Pohque High School. So thank you for those comments.
Next we have Ms. Olivia Clark.
Hi, I just wanted to say real quick regarding the kids to Parks Day. If there's any way that, I'm a mother of six and one of my, my children, my daughter has diabetes, so I would request that instead of something like hot dogs and soda, maybe some water bottles and maybe some locally grown produce like sweet corn or something that's here, something more healthier and encourage you guys to do something locally so to get the kids out there. Thank you.
In addition to cards, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Ms. Joyce Perez.
Hello, I just wanted to thank you for a breath of life. I've talked to the city manager and Thursday we'll be picking up the license and the balance due now is zero. And so we just wanna thank you guys for all your hard work and everything that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate the positive comments. In addition to cards.
Mr. Richard Brown.
Richard Brown, I'm not gonna be as nice as those other people was 'cause I'm coming up to the point. This, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm listening at y'all talking about the fishing pier and how you care about your community, but this yard sale thing that done went down with the, with the code enforcement, it's off the chain. And it's you guys who can make the decision. It's off the chain. This year what I'm looking at, they, they told me to go get a permit, a notarized letter from the person that I was using the property, I took it to city hall, now they said they can't use it. Then this copy here says that if you have a yard sale, you got to get a permit every time you have a yard sale. So if I have three a day, I got a month, I got to get three permissions every time I have a yard sale. And it's all in here. It's all in black and white. I mean, I don't know, but you guys, you guys can make the decision on this yard sale thing. Down Rodden Avenue, people been selling down on Rodden Avenue for 30 years, for 30 years. And I don't know, I know a lot of these people are here for, for John, Coach Johnson, but a lot of them are here about this yard sale. This code enforcement guy, I don't know where he coming with this drama 'cause he probably ain't gonna stay about eight months and he done left all this drama here, but it's gonna, you know, they come and go. We done had about eight or nine code enforcers. And this was already passed through here with the commissioners, and you guys can make the decision because the city manager, the city, they work for you guys. If you guys say they can sell down on Rodden Avenue like they've been doing for 30 years, that's a done deal. So we put y'all in the office, in them seats, and now we gonna see how y'all gonna respond. Those are the people out there been selling for, they ain't out there to try to make no money, they just out there with people, just, just mingling. And you mean to tell me for 30 years that a rookie code enforcement gonna come in here and change it overnight? And you guys gonna sit back, I know y'all done heard the drama, y'all gonna sit back and just twiddle your thumbs? And these the people that put y'all in office? All y'all got to do is bring to the table and vote for it that y'all can have yard sales on Rodden Avenue, and it's a done deal. That's a done deal. A done deal. I went and paid $8 to get a, a notarized letter, I'm $8 out of that. But it's left up to you guys, and I'm telling y'all seriously, all y'all got to do is vote on it. And can't nobody change it. They can yard sale on Rodden Avenue from front to back, from shallow all the way to Thriftway, and it's a done deal. And we the one put y'all in them seats, and we looking for y'all to scream about this yard sale thing.
Thank you for your comments. In addition to cards, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, Ms. Sharon Colvin.
I didn't hear what y'all, I didn't hear what y'all said. I, I said y'all can, y'all can make a change, I ain't heard no answer. I mean, I know y'all can't do it tonight. I know y'all can't do it tonight. I'm just asking y'all right now in front of all these people, all y'all gonna do it. That's all I'm asking.
Most, most time when citizens address the commission, you don't get an answer right away. It's an ordinance, it's actually the law, so it can't be changed just overnight. But the process can start if the commission so choose to, and you're three minutes up.
Okay.
In addition to cards, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Ms. Sharon Colvin.
Sharon Colvin, 3096 Bacon Point Road. Chandler, I had a question, and the reason I didn't ask you personally, I would think that I've got an inquisitive mind, and there might be others here that have an inquisitive mind. I'd like to know what this big pole is that is up by PNC Bank. Who has put it up? What is its purpose? I mean, is this big brother that is coming in or what? Can, can you give me any answer to that tonight?
No, ma'am. It's part of communications pole that they utilize for some of these cell phone reconnectors that they connect to satellites. And one thing that happened in the Florida legislature about right-of-way and these industries coming in and it's installing these poles is we lost that fight. And so unless we enact some type of city ordinance that they have to pay us a certain amount of money to install it, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, they have that state right to install these poles that has these transistor communication boxes located on them. We really don't have a say-so in that. They are very delicate about where they place them. They put one on Barfield Highway recently. So they're kinda, you know, in the areas. And so we lost that fight in Tallahassee about this type of SEC communications in the state of Florida. It's one of those home rule things that we lost on.
So this is having to do with phones and stuff like this or satellites? Not the brother watching?
Some of both, really. Some of both. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't expect they're gonna place 50 of these tall poles up in the city of Pahokee because probably one of them will service this area significantly. Maybe two or three, but we sort of lost that fight in Tallahassee when it came to that. The best thing we can do is sort of look at our own ordinances and see what we can enact to kind of, you know, keep some out of our right-of-way, but that's something the city... city attorney can explore with the commission.
Because I noticed Thursday, I was in town and all day they had one lane of traffic closed off, their car, their trucks had no, uh, script on them from, that they're from anywhere, so I was just wondering what was going on.
That's what it is, yeah, yeah. I think they were servicing that actual pole though because it's been up for quite some time.
Thank you, ma'am. In addition to comments, card, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, Ms. Mancy Miller.
Yes, Mancy Miller, 521 Pahokee Circle. What I want to find out, what arrangement the city have with these trash truck? Trash truck coming around to my area once per month most of the time. Them trash beyond the ground how long, nobody to pick it up. And I know when Pahokee City used to have their own truck coming around, it was like that. So I want to know, how come they say contractor is cheaper more than Pahokee City running their own truck? Because I believe them two trucks still parked somewhere around here. Because the last one was, was a new truck bought for ninety-five thousand dollars, I could remember. So I would love to get an answer why the trash got to stay on the ground for four weeks and killing out the grass where it is. So that's what I have to say, so I'm looking for an answer.
Um, one thing we've had in this city is a very difficult, uh, communication with waste management, who's the contractor for the city of Pahokee. We've actually, I'm actually going to be meeting with the vice president of waste management. We have a lot of things we have to address. There seem to be, once we solve it in one area, then it crops up in another area. They're just not consistent, uh, with their contracting the services to the city. And so, uh, I, I'm frustrated as you are, but I am meeting with the vice president. Uh, we got the next and we're going to be addressing some of the inadequacies. Unfortunately, they sub out, um, a lot of their work. They have our contract and then they sub out with like Jet to pick up our debris. And Jet is a subcontractor that is not as consistent as they should be. And even at times, even the waste management trucks are not on the proper routes that they should be on. I actually just had this conversation with the vice president and I indicated to him, uh, this is just forty-eight hours ago, on the weekend by the way, um, that we needed more than just two trucks coming to the city of Pahokee on the two different routes, uh, throughout the week. What's happening is those trucks, when they get loaded and they can't take on anymore, they have to travel back, you know, to the coast to unload. Unfortunately, trucks not coming back to finish the job. And so two days go by, they'll go to the next route for, for the other side of town, but they forgot about the route that they didn't finish two days before. And so that's something I'm expressing with the vice president of the corporation that they need to bring more trucks to address each route every time where they're not leaving trash and they're not coming to address that trash the next day. So it's been an ongoing battle, but, you know, we, we're going to try to give this company a more opportunity to, uh, to increase their services. Uh, I've been fighting with them for quite some time. I have mentioned it to some of the commissioners that when it's time for contract conversations, you know, we'll be looking for options for other services for the city of Pahokee. So, but, but if you can let us know where those dunks are, you know, we can come by and try to address them as much as possible like we do our legal dumps.
In Pahokee Circle.
Okay.
But what I'm saying though, the, do these court enforcers, they go around and see everything, why they do us to do a trash box in, in place?
You mean the, the trash that need to be?
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments, Card?
Yes, sir, Ms. Tamika Powell.
Thank you, Chandler, you did a good job of answering my question.
Um, Ms. Jennifer Hannah.
Good evening.
Um, Mr. Williamson, you speak about the projects and Citizen Village. We need dates because every time you speak on it, you talking about real soon. As well as the recreation for the gym, you always saying real soon. I'm tired of hearing real soon. We want a dates, actual dates when things are going to get started. We watch the people put the markers down and still, they wipes away, they still don't, they got to come back and re-mark them because it's gone. One guy actually said, we just marking because it ain't going to be done. That's sad. You laughing, but I'm serious.
I'm, I'm telling you because that's just not true.
You talk about sewage, we got holes, they filling them in, and instead of going back, the rain wash it away, whatever you putting in, it's not holding. I have several vehicles that's driven as well as other kids driving through, other citizens driving through, and it's a nuisance. Y'all ain't going to give me the money to sixty-five or seventy dollars for their alignment. So we want dates, not soon.
Thank you, ma'am. In, in addition to comments, Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll move into the comments, concerns of our city commissioners. Just like to remind y'all that it's close at nine, so if you keep that in mind, we'll get out here by nine. I'm going to start with Timon Wright, Commissioner Walker.
My comments is, well, about, um, you, you, you all in the city manager. I, I, I want to know. Commissioner, Commissioner Mayda. I'm sorry, there you go. There you go. I, I would like to know about the evaluation. Is, is the city, um, mission responsibility or to give my evaluation to determine yes or no to my evaluation?
That's, that's a valid question. I know in the past where a commissioner, uh, I'm using as example and I'm saying this relate to you, but a commissioner in the past have, uh, decided that he wouldn't complete an evaluation. Then after everything was tallied, he changed his mind and said he wanted to. Uh, the commission just allowed that to be included in there. That was their choice to include his comments although it was late and after the final tally was done. So Commissioner Walker's asking, uh, with this commission, consider having her evaluation included in there now. That's a valid question. We can either concur with that or not.
Right, he, you all determined his, his, uh, evaluation, not, not him. So I wanted to know, just what I said, you, you all determined this evaluation, not him.
Anybody got any comments on that? She want to know whether or not the commission would agree to include her evaluation into...
It's your responsibility.
The city manager overall evaluation, even at this late date, she has it, could it be included in?
You, you are, should be determined that, not, not him, because all the, the HR person.
Okay, all I have to say, you have to be, you have to be, you know, I would get shot down, but you have to be fair, you have to be honest. Um, the evaluation was given out, uh, and it's not about Chandler about, because he didn't give us the evaluation, it came from the human resource department. The evaluation was given out, I think, way before the election. And, and it was placed in all of the, um, the commissioners mailbox, which you go, well, you're supposed to check your mail at least once, however time you want because the, um, the office is open five days a week. But I know that it were placed in the mailbox and they had a date, I think the original date was due on March, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Commissioner Walker.
Letter.
They were due on March thirteenth. Since that was the election date, they gave us an extension to do the, um, the, I was even late. She called all, you have to, I'm, I'm just fair, you, she called all of the commissioners from what she stated that they haven't, and plus sent an email that we have not gotten your, uh, evaluations of the city manager. It had nothing to do with Chandler. So my thing is, I don't mind including the, the results, but I'm just saying, but you have to be, you cannot, you got to take the person, your personal feelings and issues out of the way because we did have one say, well, I'm not going to complete it at all. And then, well, this one, I don't feel like doing it. No, if you, you got to do whether you feel like it or not, just put it on paper. Put your, um, your concerns on the evaluation. But I think when she did call and she did say the evaluation was due, she needed them before, by five o'clock that day to make, to close out the, um, the count. So, you know, she did get, and we heard her statements right here where she did call and give like, I think, two extensions. So, you know, you just have to be, you have to be fair and we got to stop, we got to stop this about, well, it's Chandler, it's Chandler. No, Chandler have anything to do with it. This came strictly from the human resource department.
Okay, what, what I'm going to do because it's the lateness of the time, to move this forward, if any commissioner desire to motion to move this, and, and we have a second, we'll go ahead and vote to include it. If not, it'll die for a lack of a, a move and a second. And it can always be brought up at some point.
Comment, I want to know if, I want to know if the commission, commission are responsible to my evali- my evaluation, not him. You, you, you all, uh, are his boss, I'm saying, lack of word, for his boss, not him, not him. So I want you to determine what I do, need to do.
Yes, we have your request and, and I again, I ask commissioners, if that's your desire, if someone moved that and seconded it, we would vote on it. If not, at this time, it would die because of like of a second.
That's, that was okay.
Yes.
That's a here, you're, you're all the deciding, I am.
Well, can I say this in, in, in speaking with the integrity of the situation? Did not a deadline dictate the accepting of the...
You, you understand, you understand that, but you, 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 you should decide that she is the responsibility for the, 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 anyway, he responsible, not them, not mine, not you, him, he's, he's, not he, it's, it's not for him decide whether or not you are going to reject my evaluation. So she, the, yes, it was given, yes, I had second time, but most of the time I don't have any, um, transportation or whatever, no, and nobody didn't, uh, evaluate it to me. So, but anyways, for the second time, one, you are determined that he is, he, there, there, he determined that he's going, I'm sorry, going to dismiss my evaluation, not him.
And, and sticking with the integrity of the process, this is what I would call a BB before Benny, but in speak, in sticking with the integrity of the process, does deadline, do deadlines drive this process? Meaning, let, let me finish, that if it's not submitted by a certain time, it's not a person saying that, uh, we're not accepting the evaluation. It is the deadline stating that if it's not turned in by a certain deadline, um, then the evaluation isn't accepted. I don't know if that's the language because I wasn't here, so I'm asking that in form of a question. Secondly, as an extra layer of, of protection for both the commissioner and the city, I think what needs to be happened is a reasonable effort put in place that if one does not do an evaluation or refuse to do an evaluation, to have something in writing with the signature of that commissioner stating a refusal so we don't get into a back and forth word battle to say, oh, I did not say I didn't do it or I wasn't given the opportunity. Because, you know, we got to stick with the integrity of the process and that's, that, I don't care if Addie Dottie was the city manager, uh, we got to stick with the integrity if, if we missed the deadline. If I missed the deadline, then I, my evaluation, whether it's good or bad, shouldn't be accepted.
You are, you don't explain, you under, you under, you don't understand what, what I was saying.
She's saying as, we as a commission can override all that.
Exactly, right.
That's what she's saying.
Not him.
Not him. That's what she's saying.
Not, 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 not the HR person, not the HR person, the, the commission. If you saying now, yeah, no, I don't want to hurt my evaluation, accept it, so be it, but not him, not HR, us to make evaluation.
Again, to...
Even if I...
But I, I, I just feel like that's, and, and this is not being combative with you, with all due respect, Commissioner Walker. I just, I, was that mentioned here, did Mr. Williamson say tonight that your evaluation could be accepted or did he say that prior to this meeting?
That's what I'm, that's, that's exactly what I'm telling you now. He, no, he didn't, he did, he didn't, he did not accept my evaluation. He did not accept, he did not accept it from HR.
The, the question here now is, would we allow her evaluation to be factored into his rating? I mean, we can, we can make sure...
Or determined, determined.
Right, we can make sure in the future that if we got set deadline and we say that if you don't meet that deadline, then it won't be counted. But tonight, I know in the past, since I've been here, it has been...
What has been?
That a late evaluation was included.
Was included?
Was included.
Okay, well, I mean...
I'm not saying we have to follow that, but it has been...
Well, we could have said, well, that could have been said three minutes ago, but, but what I wanted, but what I wanted to stick to the integrity, why we got to put it in motion if it's accepted? If it's been a, a, a prior practice, why did it have to be put to motion? Because of precedents have been established.
I thi- I think the commissioner is, uh, saying that she believes the commission, if anyone, should set deadlines on when the commission's evaluations are due, not the city manager or the HR department.
Okay, okay.
And that because the commission hadn't done that and because of her situation, her evaluations should still be counted.
Well, except it. And, and moving forward, we need to put some fine, fine lines in there explicitly stating when the due date is. I, I mean, we, we can't hold one responsible because we, we, uh, did not tie all loose ends.
So to clarify that matter, that would be a motion to accept, uh, commissioner's, uh, evaluation and have it included along with everyone else's. You're all going to have a say in whatever comes of this anyway, so it really, you should just include it in.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I, I'd like to offer a motion that...
Who motion? Because I already just said motion.
No, you have to state the motion. Uh, I would like to offer a motion that commissioners, that Commissioner Walker's evaluation be accepted and received based on previous precedents set. Also, in addition, a deadline set by the commission... Also, in addition, a deadline set by the commission needs to be set, and it stated, if submitted after the deadline, evaluations will no longer be accepted beyond deadline.
Need to entertain a second to move it forward.
Okay, do you, can I ask question?
No, no.
Okay, second.
Okay, it been properly moved and seconded, properly moved by Commissioner Everett, and properly seconded by Vice Mayor, uh, Mervin, that this commission accept, uh, Commissioner Walker evaluation, and in the future set a deadline will be set by the commission with a cutoff period where evaluation would be accepted. Call for question.
But how do the commission set the date when the HR is the one that, after tally, the, um, the day? I, I'm agreeing with accepting the evaluation, but I'm, but I'm thinking we should accept the evaluation, Commissioner Walker's, uh, evaluation. But we need to guide, go by the guidelines of what the, the HR set in place the next time, not the commission setting the date.
Okay, because, because it's a policy related, uh, 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 it could be that the HR could provide, provide a recommendation, uh, that this would be an appropriate date to set at a deadline, but the commission would have to approve it. They can make some adjustment, that's a little too early, or that's a little too late, and quit the date if necessary. So, she still would have a role in it, it's just like the city manager. Uh, we approve policy, but he can recommend policy to us. But we have to have the final say whether that policy will be done correctly.
Of the evaluation.
Right. And we may agree with their date. It's just officially that we're agreeing with the deadline.
But Mayor, if I can, you have a certified human resource manager, and her job, independent of all of us that work in City Hall and on this diocese up here, she works independently. She doesn't get directions from me when it comes to my contract and deadlines. And we can't box her in, because she's the HR manager. And she knows when my annual contract comes up for renewal, which is always April sixth, that's my start date. But if you're not gonna say you're gonna step into City Hall and start dictating to the Human Resource Department when that date should be, then you're sort of in a way adding a layer and boxing the Human Resource Manager in, when actually, she did provide a proper deadline to this commission. It was almost two and a half weeks, and she waited. There was no response. She then sent emails. She called as reminders, no response. Actually, all of the, all of the evaluations were late, to be honest with you. But we're not addressing that part. When all the evaluations came in, there were some still missing. We were seven to eight weeks in from the deadline. So, I think you need to be careful here, when you try to move into human resources, which is an independent entity of the city that works without, within the division of the city, but that HR manager works independently. She sets those dates because she has a timeline when she wants to do those calculations and that evaluation, and get it back to the commission. So, we have to be very careful here, when you start setting dates for the Human Resource Manager to provide an evaluation, because that sort of boxes her in into complying with you, and then she really sort of works under my authority, but I didn't give her any due dates. She looked at when the election was, she said, "This is, this is the due date." She sent that out to everybody at an appropriate time. She then sent out the package at an appropriate time, and then sat there and waited, and waited some more. And then she did her emails, her phone calls. I gave an evaluation packet to Commissioner Walker's mother. That was seven weeks after the due date. So, I think we need to be careful about boxing the Human Resource Manager in, because one of us up here feel that they were not provided the opportunity to turn the application in, and that's just not true. You're talking eight weeks.
I can almost assure you, when that recommendation come from the Human Resource, most likely, it's gonna be approved by the commission unless the dates are so out of norm that we can agree with.
But since I am the, for the lack of better phrase of putting it, the motion maker, I, I wanna go on the record of, of stating that it's not my attempt to box the, um, the HR person in. However, just going off of what, uh, Mayor Bab stated, that it was a precedence, uh, uh, set by this commission, that whether it was on time or late, it was accepted. However, so that we can do business with a spirit of excellence moving forward. Whatever the date is given, it needs to be understood by everyone who is on the diocese, that this is the date, and it will not be accepted with, uh, it will not be accepted after the deadline moving forward. I think also, the, our defense, if it was a no, would be weakened, because as stated by several, all of them were late. So, in moving forward, I'm not trying to box, uh, the HR person in, and you're right, because I do have, uh, a background, because that's what I went to school, uh, for, is HR. I, I will say this, I agree with you, they're independent, they have to be, uh, impartial, but we need to put stuff in writing. So, it, so when things are brought before the diocese, we can say, not word of mouth, "You refused to do the evaluation." Okay, you refused to do it. Commissioner Everett, I need you to sign stating that you refused to do it. So, when weeks later come around, if I say, "Well, I want to do it now," no, you refused on such and such a date. I think what we need to do is create a paper trail, and not have word battles saying, "I said it," "No, I didn't say it," "You said it," "No, I didn't say it." So, I think, because all of them were late, and late is late, whether it's a day late or several days late, just accept it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and second, in addition to question, her and none, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Everett?
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Mervin looked at me and said, uh, "Have and have nots on." I said, "Well, I hope you T-voted." Um, I, I do have just one statement. It, it seems as if, we, we, we in Pahokee, we do want to move progressively forward. And we want to be the best Pahokee we can be, and I'm all for that. And I don't think we need to dumb ourselves down as a city. But we also understand that there are culture, social mores that are attached to each city, whether it's Miami Beach, whether it is Fort Lauderdale, whether it's Pahokee. And there seems to be some misinformation, some misnormals, some confusion, as it relates to yard sales. And, and just, you know, I know we don't always have to give an immediate response to comments that are given, but, uh, if we can bring about clarity, uh, to this whole saga with yard sales, uh, because once it gets in the, uh, uh, in the community, sometimes the best information, or the, the, the most accurate information is not always communicated. Now, when I read the ordinance, it said, uh, you could do, um, uh, yard sales on Saturday from eight to four, as long as you receive a permit. That it could be done on commercial property, as long as you have permission from the owner to do the yard sale. So, am I correct in what I'm just saying? Because if so, that seems to be pretty clear to me. Then if I'm at Thriftway, I can do it. If I'm at Church of God Shallow, I can do it, because I have permission to do so. Am I correct?
Commissioner, again, I'd like to be able to review that and give you a memo on that next time, so that we have it down, and there are no mistakes.
Okay, understood. Uh, thank you. Um, um, my last comment is this, I, I had one about the Community Relations Board, I'll save it. But the last comment is this, sometimes we can win the battle and lose the war. And I don't believe that we need to be chaff driven by the wind. But I also understand that I didn't put myself on this diocese. Community put me on this diocese, and they were very clear in who they wanted on this diocese. And so, I have a responsibility to the citizens to represent them and represent them well. And whether I agree or disagree with their comments, I feel as an elected official, I have to give ear to their concern. And in hearing Mr. Alfonso Smith's comments regarding, uh, Coach J, Coach Johnson, what have you, um, I don't know all of the, the intricacies surrounding the event other than an organized, uh, sport event was taking place on the grounds. Um, it was not, um, properly paperwork, paperwork, and I'm, I, I am full agreement with that. I told citizens, uh, it was excellent what we were doing, trying to engage our young people in sport. I think it was an excellent idea. However, we have to teach our children not only sports, but we need to teach our children about real life and following rules. That's even the driving force with sporting events. There are rules and parameters set. But, and I understand it was for the kids. So, I want to go on the record to say, I agree with following policy and procedure. And I agree that employees must support the company's organization, what have you, rules and regulations regarding what, whatever is set for, policies and procedures. But in hearing, um, Mr. Smith, uh, and not knowing every detail surrounding the events leading up to his being suspended, um, could you engage in conversation with Coach J regarding his resignation, if he's, if he resigned? And does a three-day suspension without pay, uh, is, uh, a punishment that is commensurate with the, uh, offense made by, uh, the person in question, Coach J? Because in the process, I just don't want us to win battles, but ultimately, as a city, we lose the war. I'm not saying Coach J should not be reprimanded if he did something against policy. But just for conversation and questions sake, is the three-day suspension without pay commensurate with what he did? And exactly what it was. Uh, and I know we can't discuss personnel on the diocese. I understand that it was just a rhetorical question, not required an immediate answer, because it is personnel. But I just would hate for us to win battles but lose, um, the war. And I hope that the city staff can take action with this Kids to Park Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Everett. Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin?
Good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hill?
Huh?
Any comment? Thank you, meeting adjourned, thank you.